There's one right here, Mark. Right here. Yeah, I've copied it. Page one, page two.
So, we'll start off with, well, citizens' comments, but only citizen's comments that don't have to do with the two hearings. How many people do we have on? Oh, is it? Mrs. Nois, do you have anything to say? Or do you want to wait for our hearings? Okay, sounds good. All right, so I want to close citizens' comment, and we'll go on to the first public hearing is the branded realty one. Do you want to read that into the minutes, and we'll start this hearing?
Public hearing notice, the West Boylston Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 13th, 2025, at 7:05 PM in a hybrid setting at the West Boylston Town Hall, 140 Worcester Street, West Boylston. And by Zoom, to consider the application described below in accordance with the West Boylston zoning bylaw, Article 3, Paragraph 305-3.6 Site Plan Review at West Boylston General, Bylaw, Chapter 270, Stormwater Management. Can I read the whole thing, or the whole page?
Just the part where it says, "The applicant, branded realty," I think it's.
Applicant, applicant for site plan review and stormwater management permit. It's Branded Realty Group 2 LLC. They're proposing a new Dunkin' restaurant to be located at 262 West Boylston Street. The complete site plan review and stormwater permit application submittals are available at the town clerk's office for public inspection during regular business hours. Any interested person is invited to attend this meeting, at which time you will be given the opportunity to be heard.
All right, well, welcome. Do you want to do an initial presentation? So, you're branded, you're VHB?
Correct.
All right, so then, everybody, this is our, you want to introduce yourselves? I know Wayne, but I don't know, oh, green to go.
There we go. Pat Dunford, traffic engineer for the VHB, and Nate Pareto, civil engineer, VHB.
Thank you very much. And then you can introduce yourself, and then you can start your presentation, just to get the, so, get everybody.
Robert Branca, manager of Branded Realty Group 2 LLC, this is Patrick Healy, who is our civil engineer. We're here applying for a site plan approval for our relocation of our existing Dunkin' Donuts business at 244 West Boylston Street, next door to the, what we all call the grass lot between our plaza and CVS. Our relocated site is intended to provide improved ingress and egress with separate entry and exit points with internal circulation that avoids vehicle conflicts. The design, drive-through lane is designed to stack 22 cars without impeding the impact in the public roadway. Right now, we can only stack 11 next door. We provided an extensive traffic analysis. We're going to be showing through our traffic engineer, William Scully, the actual flow of traffic and the site design for entrance and exit. The site will be served by public sewer and septic. Town water, trash is going to be stored in a secured enclosure, collected regularly. There's, will be adequate lighting, snow storage and emergency access. The proposed use is the continuation of an existing business and does not introduce new sources of noise or odor. All lighting will be downward facing and shielded to prevent glare onto abiding properties. Drive-through speakers will be oriented to minimize sound impact and use standard decibel controls. The project preserves the commercial character of the area and is consistent with surrounding uses and existing zoning. The building and site are designed to improve upon the existing conditions and provide better buffering, landscaping, and traffic control. As the site is directly adjacent to the existing store with the exact same operation, there should be minimal disruption. A stormwater management plan is provided and complies with state and local standards to prevent runoff and emissions, and is an improvement over what's there now, which is nothing. No wetlands are located on the site, and there's no impacted, anticipated impact to sensitive environmental areas. The proposal supports a long-established local business and maintains local employment. And relocation will alleviate prior site constraints, improve customer experience, traffic flow, and safety.
Perfect. Do, does anybody have any questions from the board?
I have a question regarding the drive-through car count. Where exactly does that start and stop, the, the count?
We can.
I'll get into that.
Yeah.
You're going to get into that later, okay.
When we have that exhibit up, it'll be very clear.
Okay. Oh, yes, perfect. Perfect, and they, and they all went through, expected.
Some people are around doing vacations, so they didn't all come back, but they were all noticed.
Okay, perfect. Do you have any questions or anything you want before we start? Did you, you receive the VHB review letter?
I did.
Did you respond to that, or there was some issue on Monday or something like that?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, okay.
We'd actually had some verbal conversations, and.
Have you been in touch? I mean, yes, I'm sure, okay.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'll give a brief presentation on the site plan, and then we can get into the review if you'd like.
Cool, yes, please do.
So, the exhibit that I have up on the board currently shows the different ownerships.
Okay.
The lot in question is colored in yellow. This is owned by the BWRN Trust. Our client will be leasing the property from that trust to build, to do a land lease to build the new Dunkin' facility. So, our clients also own the property that's colored in blue to the north, the Centerwood Plaza, and some backland. The purple area is owned by a different trust where the CVS is currently located. That's the RWBM Trust.
And you have agreements with them that allows you to be their agent at this meeting?
Yes, they signed our permit applications.
Okay.
And one other thing I noticed, because a lot of the VHB comments involved the assumption that the same owner owned all three lots, and we needed a subdivision, but there's three different owners already. And there was a subdivision back in the early 2000s when the CVS was built.
Okay.
And the CVS driveway onto, onto West Boylston Street was approved, and there's an existing easement agreement to allow for that. And they had recommended that you consider all of that, that's already been long done.
But the, what I'm concerned about is the variety of ownership for you to present. They've all signed on to say that that's a, you, you are going to be empowered to make decisions and act as their agent here.
Yes, well, CVS isn't an applicant because they've already agreed to an easement agreement with the property.
Right, but there's, those agreements are in place for you to be the acting.
And we have an agreement with the Wyatt family, who owns both of those trusts, which are separate owners of the CVS lot and the proposed lot.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to be clear, Mr. Chair, because there was some confusion in our application about the ownerships. And we want it to be clear that the yellow lot is the one in question. There'll be a land lease, not a, not a real estate transaction. So, our clients aren't purchasing the property.
Yeah, we won't merge ownership with the next-door lot.
Right, but you, so, so the other half of that is that you have the permission to be on there in agreement with them? You can be there, they don't have to come in and talk about their property, you are their agent here.
Yes, they signed our application as a property owner.
Yes, so consequently, some of our work that's proposed requires some cross easements.
Yep.
So, the two parties have agreed on the easements. We haven't yet defined the boundaries of the easements, but they have a draft agreement in place.
And then, subsequent, or, I guess, after the site plan is approved, you'll come through with your ANRs that have the, all the easements, and, or, any changes to lot lines or something like that that has to happen?
Well, if there is a change to the existing easement with the CVS lot, which we've, we're very close to finalizing that, we will record that.
Yes, okay.
So, it's, it doesn't require planning board action, so it's not like an.
Oh, that's, that's not an A R?
We're not moving the lot.
We're not merging ownership, we're not merging, we're not changing lot lines, nothing.
So, we're creating boundaries of easements that are defined, that the land surveyor signs that plan.
But that we find, that we identifiable or finding, findable on the deed? I mean, that, just so that when people are looking in the future, that's not.
Absolutely, yes, it'll be a recorded.
It'll be in the chain of title.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Go ahead with the, the presentation of the, the real stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, our cover sheet shows the locus of various parties in interest within 500 feet of the property. This shows a locus map based on the USG app, CVS, where it's located. The property is located in the business zone.
You can put that on there.
Oh, will that pick me up?
I'll bring it to you, Ann.
Thank you. So, the, the property where we're constructing the Dunkin' and the parking improvements and the curb cut are all in the business district. There's some backland in the residential district. We're not touching that property at all.
You're 50 feet from wherever that, that zone border is?
Not sure of the distance, but we're not doing any work within the residence district. So, this property's plan shows the current ownerships and the conditions for the parking on the CVS here, the curb cuts on Woodland Street and Route 12, the existing curb cuts here at the Centerwood Plaza, and the subject property here, topography, the current line of trees here, some of the large trees that would be removed as part of the project. We did point out that the property is not located in a flood zone. In addition to the business district, it's also in the overlay districts. Wireless communication.
Overlay district or something.
And.
Is there a?
May have been another overlay district as well.
Is there an underground ducting of a, of the river? Of Angel Brook or something like that under there someplace?
Not that we're aware of, that doesn't show up on our survey.
Okay.
So, this, this plan here shows the limit of clearing, which is out to here. You see this heavy dark line? All of the trees within this area would be removed. So, there's a row of some aged arborvitae along that dividing the two properties that would be removed as part of the project. There's a couple of large trees back here, it's a couple of pine trees, a maple. And what came up during our review is also an irrigation well back in this area that would have to be reset into a manhole, so it's subsurface.
If you're taking me all the way on, do you still need that thing?
We haven't really clarified who was responsible for maintaining that at this point, we're still investigating that. This is sort of an overview showing how the Dunkin' and the proposed parking fits into the surrounding areas. So, there will be a connection here on the north side from the Centerwood Plaza. There's an ingress here from the shared driveway with CVS and an exit over here. So, that's CVS. Currently, the driveway allows right turns in and right turns out, but this section around the drive-through is one-way traffic counterclockwise.
And that's going to maintain?
That would be maintained, yes. So, what we're proposing is about 2,000 square foot Dunkin' restaurant with our freestanding walk-in freezer on the back of that. In addition, we have a 279-foot drive-through lane here. That would accommodate about 12 to 13 cars in the, in the lane itself. But where we were talking about additional backup, there's room for additional cars to back up off of Route 12 if they're indeed waiting to go through the drive-through. That would add up to about 20 cars. We're currently, from the window to Route 12, we can only fit 12 cars, maybe 11 cars.
The current restaurant is about 11 cars?
Yes, it's 11 cars from the window to Route 12.
From the window to pass the speaker out to Route 12, that's the current one?
Yes.
And so, this new one is?
The new one has.
About the same, but you can have backup sort of off 12, but into the old parking lot of, that's what you're saying?
Yes, sir. So, if, if we exceed the 12 cars in the drive-through lane, there's room for additional cars to queue up and not create conflicts on Route 12, which is the current situation.
Generally speaking, it was always from the speaker to 12 that was the problem, not from the speaker to the window. So, what, did, did we gain any, any space there?
Yes, working with our clients, we've done a number of Dunkin' sites for them. It's important to them to have a short time of service. From the window to the order menu to the window is about 100 feet. It's about six car lengths.
I'm sorry.
So, they can line up six orders within the building. Right, in the current situation, they only have about four car lengths from the, the order menu to the.
Yeah, what I was, what I was trying to ask, what, from the, from the speaker, where you order to, out to Route 12, current one, how many feet is that?
Approximately six to seven.
I think that's accurate, yes.
Yeah.
Six to seven cars?
Six to seven cars.
So, how many, how many, how many feet is that?
Hundred, I think that's what you said in the other one.
Just roughly?
Yeah, roughly 100 feet.
And what, what would it be now on the new one?
From, from the menu out to Route 12?
Correct.
Over 200 feet.
That's a double the size.
Okay.
So, I think in earlier you said 11 cars for that, from the Route 12 to the pickup window is 11 cars. From here, it's 22 cars.
Well, 22 cars included the extra, after the order? No, extra if they got backed up.
If they were, if they back up beyond the striped drive-through lane, right, that's what I'm saying. Oh, because we've seen that as a problem, this is obviously a busy, it's a busy location.
Trying to explore if we, if you gained any distance from excluding the, the proposed backup lane that you're referring to? Just from the speaker to Route 12 on the new versus on the old, is it, is it similar? Because it looks like you're about the same depth. If you drive by, you're going to be in the same depth area, so.
Except they have the horizontal or whatever the other.
I, I think if we look at the length of the drive-through lane itself, from the separately striped lane from here around to the window, you know, that's, that's.
No, I agree that that's longer, right? But again, it's never from the speaker to the window, that's the issue.
With the speaker?
It's a speaker to the, it's incoming, not outgoing.
So, if, if that's 12 cars, right, we're at the sixth car with the speaker.
It's about halfway along?
Yes.
How do you plan on queuing the cars if they, instead of Route 12? How are you going to queue the cars to the old parking lot area off of 12 if they're backed up?
I think there's plenty of room within the site to allow.
But how will they be queued? How will they know to go there?
Well.
Especially if they're coming in.
If we could just talk about Dunkin' Donuts customers, right? Dunkin' Donuts is, it's a regular stop for most folks, they're repeat customers. So, they do get accustomed to the traffic pattern that's at the site, so.
And a new customer?
If you have a backup beyond this point, people will start to take the next curb cut from the plaza and queue up in that.
I hope they do, I'm just curious of how you're going to try to manage that.
Yeah, I think the way, the way it is now, there's a conflict with the traffic patterns. So, if you have people backed up to Route 12 now, the next car is in Route 12. Where in this case, if, if it's backed up beyond capacity, the next car can be out in this direction or this direction. There's plenty of room off of.
Can it leave that direction, this, this other way?
Let's, let the traffic engineers get into the traffic pattern, but this is currently proposed as one way in here, one way out here. This is a two-way existing curb cut that gets regularized, right? Currently, people go to the left to go to the drive-through lane. This regularizes it, so people keep right coming in, keep right going out. So, it, so it cleans up and makes that a safer access point. So, as I was saying previously, we are proposing some work on the Branded Realty Group property for the, of parking in the trash enclosure back here. And then I have this dashed line shown here for an access and parking easement. That would be, you know, leased back to the other owner if they should cease using the property.
And the heavy trees that you're taking out there with those new parking spaces will be, what are you putting in? Are you going to get to the screening?
Yeah, we do have a pretty extensive landscaping plan that's proposed with trees and trunks. So, on this plan, we are proposing some improvements to the walk to allow pedestrians to come into the site and get up to the building with an accessible route. We had looked at, there's an existing sidewalk along all three of these properties on Route 12, but we will now connect those through and into the building with an accessible route. This plan shows a truck turning movement for the fire trucks. We got some comments back from the fire chief, and we actually created an updated plan that shows that their truck does not have to drive across the islands or the handicap spaces. So, I think we've addressed the fire.
And that goes for delivery trucks also?
The delivery trucks, right, there's a once-a-week delivery with an 18-wheeler that would come in through CVS, loop around, and go back out through CVS.
And it's in CVS, I mean, that's, that's how CVS is designed also?
Yeah, CVS is taking deliveries on the north side of the building currently. So, their, their truck comes in through here at off-hours, off-loads in this area, and continues around. This shows the grading of the site. So, generally, the site has to be leveled out. It's currently sloped down from CVS toward the existing Dunkin'. So, there will be some fill placed on the side of the site to level it up. At the same time, there would be some cut at the rear of the site to, to level out the parking there. I haven't done a cut and fill analysis at this point, but I'm expecting it's going to be close to balancing, particularly when we take into account the underground detention system that has to be excavated. So, we're collecting the runoff in a number of catch basins that goes through a water quality treatment unit and then into this underground chamber system. So, these are eight-foot by eight-foot squares of precast concrete. So, it has walls on either two or one side. They get lined up in this excavation, surrounded by filter fabric and backfilled with crushed stone. So, we use this successfully on many different sites with similar soil conditions.
And the groundwater is low enough for that to work okay?
Yes, it is. So, one of the things, because we're at, along Route 12 here, it's a state highway, we're not allowed to increase the runoff going to the state highway. So, this is a way where we can accommodate the, the larger storms without opening up a large detention basin at the front of the site, taking away valuable real estate for parking access. This site plan proposed our utility connections. So, we would have a water connection here from an existing stub that's provided. There's an existing gas service that comes into CVS. We're hoping that we can tap into that, although we haven't had a conversation with the gas company yet. If it's not possible to tie in there, there would be a separate, you know, gas service coming in from Route 12. We had proposed the electric service coming off the existing poles behind the plaza here. The West Boylston Municipal Light prefers that we not do that. They've suggested that we put a drop at the new pole at the front of the site and bring the service in underground here. So, we're working with them to rearrange that. And then we have a grease trap and a sewer connection going out to Route 12. At the time I drew this plan, I didn't have the stub locations for the sewer on Route 12. We now have that, so we'll be updating that plan.
So, the lot had its own stub allocated?
There was a stub left for this lot, yes.
And the, and the water, you're saying you're sharing the CVS feed?
Yes, so this, when CVS was built, this was planned out to have two different buildings on it. So, this common driveway easement has common utilities to serve both of the facilities. So, there is a sewer here, but it goes out around the other side of the building. So, it's a little bit too high for us to connect into. At the same time, when the sewer was built in Route 12, there was a stub left because it was a vacant lot. As was the case, you know, across the street, there's a vacant lot, there's a stub for that, et cetera.
But the water's okay. I, I remember getting a document from the water department, and it was talking about the fire hydrant. And, 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 did they say they want a different size or something?
No, there was a concern that we, you know, verified with the fire department that that hydrant is appropriately, appropriately located for this facility. I didn't get any feedback from the fire department on that. They were more concerned with getting the truck in and out of the property. So, we had planned this out to, if the building required fire protection, there would be a place for that to connect. Given the size and the type of construction, it does not require a fire protection sprinkler system. We just have the domestic connection. And then, because we have kitchen floor, we have a grease trap that connects into the sewer line. Based on the way the design of the building has proceeded, that grease trap will actually be back in this area for, to pick up the kitchen floor. So, we'll be arranging that a little bit from what we have proposed. And then this plan is our landscaping plan, showing planting a number of trees here along the frontage between the two properties on both sides here and at the rear. And then a solid board fence around the back of the property to screen the headlights from the budding residential neighbors. The trash enclosure is back here, that would be fully enclosed with block walls.
Okay.
So, it's not visible to the neighbors.
CVS has a tall chain link. Where does that end up?
Yes, so they do have a chain link along this, there's a retaining wall at the back of their lot with the chain link fence at the top of it with the sort of slats in it. So, we're proposing to take the end of their retaining wall and bring it down at a three-to-one slope and blend into that with some landscaping in this area.
Is your fence going to come, attach to theirs to prevent people from sort of trying to wander through out the back or something like that?
No, we aren't, we aren't proposing that currently, but it's something we could look at.
I'm just, there's been discussion about the access to the part of the Woodland Park and people coming over that way. I don't know if that's really possible to come through the fence there, but if we could limit it as much as possible.
Is there a house that resides there?
There is, yes, there is a house.
But I would try to prevent it as much as we could.
I think in our, if I remember in our last meeting, of those meetings, they did ask, not the resident, you know, they did ask for a fencing. They, they did mention that.
So, Mr. Chair, I did mention that we have our, the solid board fence going at our limit of work this, and, and, combined with the slope that's going up, that would block the headlights and, you know, visibility from the neighboring properties. This plan shows in color where the sidewalk improvements are proposed. It shows how we're closing up the curb cut here a bit to conform to the Mass DOT standards. And then, over in this area, there's a, a section of paved raised curb. So, you know, the way the building operates, they get the donut deliveries very early in the morning, off-hours. That comes in with a small box truck. This is leaving them a path to get out without, you know, backing up and coming around the building.
But it'll be somehow cumbersome, so people won't use that?
Yes, you wouldn't drive your car up the sloped curbs over the hard island.
Like a, almost like a big speed bump?
Just like a traffic island. What you see at the driveway out here, for example, is an island with sloped grinning edging around it with concrete on top of it. It's not something that you would drive your car over.
Tend to look at that.
Yeah. It would still allow us to channel the vehicle traffic into the lanes here. Then I have a number of details showing our construction, but I won't get into that unless you have any questions about it.
Oh, do you have any questions you want to ask about?
There was an application some years ago for this building. Can you describe how this is different from that proposal?
I can. At the time, we did not own that plaza, we were a tenant in it.
Okay.
And we were going to be moving out, the landlord did not want us to move out and would not allow us to have the, connect the lot so that we could have interior circular traffic, and we could back traffic up there and, and share the parking. And as you're probably aware, the West Boylston zoning ordinance has been amended to basically encourage this type of development. So, if you have contiguous commercial properties, that they be connected to the extent possible. Because right now, if you want to run errands, you'd be in and out three times to, to visit all three buildings. This way, you're in once and you're out once, and it takes the traffic off of, off of Woodland Street and West Boylston Street and circulates in there. We were not able to do that back then. And we actually had the exit onto Woodland Street from the drive-through, which the police chief didn't like. Now, that's not something you would seek to do unless you were taking a ride on Woodland or you're going to visit CVS after you went to Dunkin'.
So, how do you prevent that? How do you?
It's just not convenient to get out.
We'll get into that with the presentation.
Yeah, okay.
You would have to drive all the way around the building twice to get out that way. And unless you're intending to go that way, you just wouldn't do that.
So, I, I might also add, Mr. Chair, that at the time, we had proposed that, that a new curb cut on Route 12, which put those.
I mean, previously?
Yes, in, in 2020.
Right.
So, we had proposed a new curb cut on Route 12, which had ingress and egress, you know, closer to the lighted intersection than the current Dunkin' driveway. So, this allows us to maintain that separation. The current traffic pattern for Dunkin' is using the same driveway, you know, pretty effectively.
I think that was a major thing, too many curb cuts.
And has adequate separation from the intersection.
And people going out to Woodland Street, there's a lot of traffic issues from the public.
This is definitely an improvement over what we had proposed, you know, and that's enabled by our client now controlling the property to the north.
Since we only have one person, and do you have public comment kind of things? Any questions? No? We'll, we'll ask Ms. Nois, because I know she's, has concern. Do, do you have any questions just now, and then, and then we'll get further into the presentation?
Let's hear it. The delivery that they have every night for the donuts, what time does that occur?
About 3:30 in the morning.
3:30 in the morning, and you're proposing the Woodland Street exit? Why, why can't they use Route 12?
They can use West Boylston Street. It's the 18-wheeler that we're proposing for Woodland Street, just because it's a straight shot out, and that's during business hours, generally after the morning rush. And that's happening now. I mean, everything that's, we're proposing is happening now. I mean, everything that's, we're proposing is happening now, next door, about 100 feet away.
That's, that's usually Tuesday morning.
Do you notice it? I mean.
Oh, I've been there, yes.
But I mean, when you're just at home regular?
Um, no, because it doesn't exit CVS at this point.
Okay.
It exits Route 12.
Can I speak?
Come over here and speak.
The tractor trailer comes in when I'm there, okay? He faces into the building.
Right.
And then he backs out, okay, to Route 12. And then he makes a right through the parking lot and exits through Centwood Plaza.
Through Centwood, but now they're saying they're going to go through CVS.
Why?
Yeah, exactly why.
Do you know when the CVS still?
That's what their 18-wheeler does, yeah.
Or do you know when that happens?
It's about 6:00 in the morning.
Once a week.
Right, it is, it is once a week, but it's still early in the morning. You know, all of this, Duncan Donuts opens earlier than CVS. The traffic is much busier before CVS opens. This is going to impact Woodland Street, and it's going to impact our property. You know, I, I, I just would like you to consider the neighbors. One of the other things is the, when they empty the dumpsters. We, we hear dumpsters on Route 12 all the time. Every morning, they start at 4:30, and nobody regulates that. So, now we're going to have more. And, you know, the, the quality of life on Woodland Street is much worse than it was. And it's, you know, you might think it's not a big deal, but you don't live there. So, that's all I'm saying. Please consider the neighbors.
The 18-wheeler delivery, is that during the day or is that an evening thing?
That's usually on Tuesday mornings. I've seen it.
6:30.
I've seen it.
But it's not while you're busy?
It's not while we're busy generally, no. Usually after that.
6:30, 7 o'clock?
But it, but it's still 6:30 or 7 o'clock in the morning, and then it's going to exit next to our house. Why cannot it exit onto Route 12? That's my question.
Could it be later in the day, like 10 o'clock?
We can make that request, yes.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I, I don't want to be a pain in the neck. I just know that our quality of life has gone way downhill since CVS came, and now this is on top of it.
Well, I mean, we can, we can see about moving the deliveries around, so they're just not early, well, for that 18-wheeler one.
And that's my only point.
Yeah, we can make that request.
Do this during the day.
In the, in the trash dumpster.
I don't think they're supposed to be there.
We'll be removing the one that you hear now. It'll just be the new one. It'll be in a new enclosure, and there'll be a brick. Right now, it's not enclosed at all, so you would hear and see it, well, you do hear and see it. Now, we'll have a masonry enclosure, so it should.
Yes, but you still have the truck.
But what time do they come get it?
Have you ever?
I'm not sure. It changes.
And had one happen, you know, 100, 200 feet from your bedroom? I don't think you have.
I thought that they weren't allowed to do that sort of stuff that early in the morning.
But see, this is the whole thing. Nobody's enforcing this.
Well, it might not be ours.
Oh, I know.
Because there's five or six dumpsters back there.
How early they collect this trash?
Ms. Noice?
Yes.
How early they collect the trash?
What time do they collect the trash? In the neighborhood, it starts at 4:30 in the morning.
4:30?
Yes, and so you've got all the businesses, you've got the Shell station, you've got, whatever, up and, up and down, up and down Route 12, right there in the Woodland Street area, they start at 4:30 in the morning.
That's way too early.
I didn't think they could do that.
But who enforces it? You know, you call and you don't get anything. So, I don't want another dumpster closer to my house. I'm really sorry.
Understand. I mean, maybe the surround will help for one thing, but I mean, the change of time.
It doesn't.
Well, I'm not sure it's ours, because we don't.
The truck is loud.
I mean, it could be any of them. Say it again, Ms. Noice?
The truck itself is loud, and when they dump it, it bangs. It doesn't matter which business it is. It's all of them.
Right, but, but so we should.
So, why add another one closer to the houses? There are houses on Carol Drive that are closer than mine.
Right, so we should, we should work on why they're doing it that early in the first place.
Correct, but, but over the years, we have never had any satisfaction.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, I'm very sorry.
No, no, no problem. Thank you for participating. Do you want to do the traffic, or do you, do you want to address some, anything here that's drainage or traffic?
It might make sense to go through their full presentation, then we can give you an abbreviated summary or as long as you want.
Okay, how about it with the traffic? Oh, we have this extra one.
Oh, there's one here. We can just set it up over here.
I'll start here, I guess.
Oh. I wonder if that'll.
Ready?
Can the people online see that in the, in the control booth? Yeah, okay. All right, good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Bill Scully with Kimery Horn and Associates, for the record, and we were the traffic consultant, working with the applicant and the site engineer for this project. We've also, just for background, and you probably are aware, but we also were working on the 235 West Boylson Street project as well. Tonight?
It's behind you.
Oh, yeah. All right, so, so what I'm going to go through is a little bit of the study area and the process. We prepared a traffic impact study, which you may have read. I know it was peer reviewed, and I'll touch on some existing conditions and the project characteristics, as well as some of the, and draw the conclusions and recommendations. Some of it, you heard from Patrick as he went through the site work as well. So, we've been working in tandem over the last several months, and, and also with the department head meeting and went through some early comments and made some changes there. The study purpose, the study process. I've tried to, I've tried to shorten up the presentation, but I just got to keep an eye on her. So, the study process. So, typically, you know, we collect data, traffic volume data, physical information, crash data, review, review that, we forecast traffic out there, follow the standard practices and procedures that are typically used in Massachusetts and accepted by Mass DOT. And I think in general, VHB's review has indicated we've generally followed acceptable practices. There's some questions that they have for us to check on. I'll touch on them in a minute. And so, the next slide shows the study area. And so, what we've done here is we have included the signal at Woodland and West Boylson Street, the driveway on Woodland, and then all the drives through 244. So, we counted the two driveways at 244, the CVS right in, right out, and then the driveway on, on Woodland that serves CVS. Next slide. So, West Boylson Street, as you all know, it's a two-lane, undivided roadway. It's a, it's a major arterial for the town. It's owned by DOT. Speeds are in the 40 mile per hour range. The speed limit is 40, and there's general compliance based on the data we've collected in terms of being in general compliance with the speed limits out there. Sidewalk facilities are provided out there and along the west side, along our site side, which is, is good. There's also RTA service along West Boylson Street as well. Next slide. So, this is just illustration of West Boylson Street traffic volumes. My big takeaway here is you can see in the morning, the morning peak period, the volumes are substantially lower than the PM. You can see it increasing. This is by hour. You can see it increasing as you go towards noon and then peaks in the late afternoon. So, what's, what's good to keep in mind is that the morning peak on, on West Boylson, the morning flows are lower when compared to the rest of the day, when Duncan, its peak is going to be in the morning, not, not in the afternoon.
What's the units of the left axis?
Excuse me?
The units, is that number of cars?
Uh, yeah, on the left, it's 500, 100, 200, 300, 400. So, you can see at 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM, it's about 500 per direction, and then you get to 4:00 or 5:00 PM, it's up around 800 per direction.
Per hour?
Per, in the hour, in that hour. Woodland Street is a local road, intersects obviously with, with Route 12. The volumes are, oh, can you go to the next one? Volumes are a lot lower on Woodland. At the signal, you do have the turn lanes. It's a collector road, so again, it's a major road for the town. All the residential neighborhoods are off of it, and Woodland connects as you go west to, I can't remember the name of the street where, the Country Club in LA. Yeah, up to Prospect, yeah. The old ice cream shop. My uncle's worked up there. So, anyways, and again, you can see the same kind of thing on Woodland, you know, the morning, the morning peak, no matter what, and, you know, if you sense it's not, but the morning volume is a lot lower even on Woodland than it is in the afternoon. But you can see it, you know, it peaks and it grows to 12, and then the real peak out there is three to five in the afternoon or three to six. Next slide.
So, you said it, it's a weekdays, any weekends, weekends?
Um, well, we studied the Saturday. I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head the Saturday daily volume. We collected it, I think, on West Boylson Street anyways, but we did a Saturday peak hour at the, on the study intersections. So, we've looked at AM peak, PM peak, and Saturday midday for the Duncan and for the intersections. What you see here is just a summary of the proposed project. So, again, and Rob mentioned it earlier, is that this project is replacing, relocating the existing Duncan at 244. We're moving over into the 262 site. And because of that, you know, there really is not a big expected change in volume, an increase in volume as a result of this project. Granted, the existing space will be vacant and then re-tenanted, and until you really know what's going in there, but it's a lot smaller space. It's not really an efficient space for something like a Duncan. So, we expect overall, the volumes are going to increase substantially as a result of this project.
Can I ask one question in that case?
Go ahead.
So, at this time, the traffic, you know, whatever, whoever goes to the Dunkin', they get their coffee, then go back to the Route 12. So, but now you are, you know, opening up another entrance to the Woodland Street. Don't you think we will be increasing the traffic at the Woodland Street because of the coffee?
So, there may be, no, no. I'd say in general, no, but we're not opening a new driveway on Woodland, but there will be an internal connection.
There will be an internal connection.
So.
I'm getting your coffee.
No, so, well, let me continue.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we can.
If you have that.
So, this project is not adding any new driveway as, as Rob and Patrick have talked about. No new openings on Woodland or on West Boylson Street. And in, you know, the ability to go along with the zoning regulation to interconnect parcels on Route 12, which I think is a real good one, you, you know, you all have been trying to get traffic management in place, so that interconnection allows for that. That's what this project enables us to do. The, can you go to the, oh, okay, good. So, on this slide, just on this, it probably jumbled up a little bit from where I wanted to go, but, but again, this just, we were talking about the drive-through and the layout and the distance and all that. And, and as we've concluded, I think Patrick mentioned, and VHB's peer review concluded, you know, the drive-through under the proposed plan is a significant improvement. It more than doubles the capacity for queued vehicles into the drive-through. Under current conditions, at times, it edges out into, into West Boylson Street, and I really don't see it happening with this type of design. Under the current plan, the proposed plan, before you even get down to the area of the parking lot or the entry point of Duncan, we're going to be able to accommodate 11 to 14 vehicles in queue, and you heard a zillion numbers tonight, 12 or 30. But, you know, it depends on how you measure it. If it's 25 feet per vehicle, then you do 11. If it's 20, then you're at 14. So, it's in that range, and plus then we have a number, you know, of space to get to Route 12. Can you go to the next slide? And this just shows you, you know, that this is using 25 feet per vehicle, so it's on, that's on the low end. The blue, the blue is, you know, going past the order board. Now, you're going up to the window. So, anyway, so that, that's a big improvement there. Next slide please. Overall, so this, this table, as I was talking about before, this is a relocation of what's already there. So, in essence, you could look at this site and say there's no new trip generation. We took it as brand new. So, we kept everything that is going in and out of the existing, didn't change anything over there, all the driveways, and then just said, okay, what if we had a brand-new facility on top of everything else? So, that's how we made our estimate. So, that's why I'm saying net new vehicle trips analyzed, in reality, I think it's going to be pretty minimal in terms of changes on the external roadway system. The net new reflects pass-by. So, as, as you all know, I mean, going to the coffee shop in the morning on the way to work, you're passing by the Duncan and you, you get a coffee in and then you go to work. So, you know, it's, it's, it's been demonstrated and researched and, and again, current practice, we, we assume the pass-by at a facility, a coffee shop, it's going to be pretty high. It's going to be in the 50% range. So, no matter how, how much traffic you generate going in and out, 50% of the traffic going in and out during the, well, pretty much most of the hours is already on the roadway passing by, and they're stopping on their way to something else.
So, it's not its own destination?
It's not its own destination. So, and everyone can, some people argue it could be as high as 70% during a morning peak hour, but, you know, we use 50% or thereabouts. So, that's where we've talked about, you know, the net new, and you can see, you know, we've, we've estimated in the morning peak hour about 40, 45 to 48 new vehicles coming into the site, if you assume it's a new facility, and then in the afternoon, it's, it's about, it's less than half of that. This chart right here is just a comparison. We went and looked at the existing Duncan and counted, and then compared that count with the national, the ITE models, which we use to forecast the new project. So, what we found was in the morning, the existing site generated about 17 additional vehicles than the ITE model would say coming into the site. But in the afternoon or on Saturday, the existing Duncan is generating a lot less traffic than about 30 to 30, 30 to 33% less traffic going in and out of the site, based on the, compared to the ITE models, the national models. So, we just did it as a comparison, just to see, we've got the existing site, let's, let's see what happens. Next slide. So, this, this is just our estimated traffic. So, you mentioned Woodland. We're projecting 15% of the trips that go in and out of Duncan are going to come from Woodland, and, and the trip distribution was primarily made based on looking at volumes out there. So, let's say someone lives off of Woodland and goes, wants to go to Duncan and then go back home. They're going to come down right now, take a left at the signal, take a left into the existing Duncan off of West Boylson Street, then take a right back on to West Boylson, take a right at the signal. In the future with this project, they could come down Woodland, take a left into the CVS lot, get over to Duncan, go through the drive-through, and then head right back to Duncan, uh, Woodland, without entering West Boylson Street, without having to add to the traffic signal volume. The same amount is. The same amount, it's not going to change the amount of traffic that was on Woodland Street. It just changes how they get to and from Woodland to go to Dunkin'. Next slide. So this, this, and we can submit the presentation if, if you'd like. This just shows a, a estimate of traffic volume changes on West Boston Street and Woodland based on comparing build to no build and existing. In general, the, again, assuming this is a brand-new Dunkin' and on top of everything else, we're talking increasing traffic somewhere between one and three percent on West Boston Street near the site or one to five percent depending on whether it's AM.
But that, that's including the existing Dunkin'?
Yes, yeah.
So is there just a lot of traffic? I mean, because you'd think it would be fifty percent.
Oh, hustle.
Well, I mean, like you, you have a Dunkin', you have all that traffic.
Oh, no.
And you add a second Dunkin', it would.
Okay, so let's, okay, so as an example, on West Boston Street, near, near Woodland, two-way volume in the morning is one thousand four hundred seventy-four in the future conditions without the new Dunkin'. Now we come in and again, we haven't deleted any traffic. We're just saying add to it, we're going to add forty-five vehicles in that spot to get to one thousand five nineteen.
Per hour.
So that's, that's, that's in the morning peak hour. In the afternoon, we're adding twenty in that spot. In the, in the Saturday, forty-two. So you compare it to forty-five over fourteen seventy-four or twenty over two thousand two hundred, so you're in that one to three percent.
So I have another question, which is regarding, or related back to where you were saying you compared the study numbers to the actual numbers? And you said it was like seventeen cars off? How, what do you think this, how do you think that influences this? Is this forty-five actually fifty?
So if we use the existing traffic going in and out of the existing Dunkin', then it wouldn't be fifty, well, it might be a little bit fifty. Seventeen would be, forty percent would be going to the north, forty percent plus the Woodland traffic coming south. So you'd have some additional traffic to the forty-five. You might have fifty-three, fifty-three, fifty-four, the increase. But in the afternoon.
Right, but the morning was the one that was higher.
Saturday would be lower. Next slide please. The, up, the intersection analysis showed on an overall basis, the signal at Woodland and, and West Boston does not change from build to no build with the project, even though we haven't deducted any traffic, we just added. It's still staying B or C at the intersection. Some of the movements change slightly and it might go from thirty-eight seconds to thirty-nine point four seconds or something like that. But the intersection in general, and I know people have raised questions about the intersection, some of that has to do with left turn movement, left turn phasing, all that kind of stuff. But on an overall basis, based on the current phasing and current operations and the projected volume, we're still overall operating fine. And I, I don't, I don't doubt the phasing issue and the left turn issues that people raise, and that's something the town should bring to DOT. It's not going to be our left turns.
What we were hoping was that between your study of this and your study across the street, it would just emphasize the issue with DOT.
It could, it could. And now, you know, across the street and most likely at this site, we do have to go through a permit process with DOT, so we'll be working with District Three. And it's, it'd be very easy to bring up that issue at the signal that the town has noticed over the years, a question mark.
Please do, I mean, as much as you can, if you want us to participate.
We, we actually just retained Bill's firm to do the state.
That part of.
DOT application for across the street.
Did, your traffic, did it include the study across, construction across the street, the new forty B?
Yes.
We, we considered additional residences in the area. And as you noted, Bill, Bill explained, we're, we're expecting new trip generation even though we don't expect to draw business, new business to this site. We expect the same customers. Just easier to get in, easier to get out.
There'll just be some more customers over there across the street.
Hopefully, yeah.
Perhaps.
Just have to cross them.
Right.
So, um, this is just an illustration. So all of the analysis shows queuing estimates, maximum queue. What it, what the analysis showed that with the build condition, it doesn't change the queue that much. What this illustration showed that in yellow, that's the future no build in the PM peak hour at the signal and the queuing, you know, will go up to that level. The red is with the additional traffic that we added into the analysis. The morning queuing is less, the Saturday volume, uh, conditions, the queuing is less than that. It doesn't reach the two forty-four drives. And this again is seven years into the future with additional growth.
Is, is the, is the length significant? Like is that a number of cars, twenty-five per car or something like that?
It's, I, if I'm remembering correctly, the yellow is like two hundred ninety-six feet and the red is three hundred and two feet.
And that's just based on?
Based on the analysis.
Per hour and the cycle of the light or something?
Based on that peak hour and based on the cycle length and all that. So, um, next slide please. So in, at the end of the day, again, I hate to sound like a broken record, but it is. You know, it's a relocation of, of an existing Dunkin'. So we don't expect substantial increases in traffic just as a result of this project. Under all conditions, whether it's no, future no build, future build, the signal is expected to operate at acceptable levels. The unsignalized driveway is down at two forty-four. So here we have, and maybe I can go up on this one. So again, we've been talking about, okay, what, how do people get in and out of this? So we put a couple of diagrams together that show, this is inbound traffic. So let's say I'm coming from the, I'm coming from the north. So I could take a right turn into two forty-four and come all the way through and then go through the drive-through or go into the parking lot. If I, I could, I could take a right turn at the right-in, right-out at CVS and, and come around either parking or into the drive-through. And the yellow shows the same thing. If I'm in Woodland, I have the option, if I'm coming down Woodland, I can take a left turn into the CVS, come around through here and then go through the drive-through. You do have the option of if I'm, if I'm on Pierce or Woodland over here and I come through, I do have the option to take a right turn into CVS and loop around. If I am leaving, so again, if I'm going north and let's say I do come through the drive-through or in, if I was in the parking lot, if I want to go north, I can come out here, take a left, I can go through two forty-four, take a left. And, and if I want, if I'm going south, I can take a right out of the right-in, right-out. And Woodland, I'm able to get down to Woodland and, and go.
But you gotta go around the CVS to get out from the drive-through.
If I, that's right.
Thank you.
So, so it may be more convenient for someone, let's say I wanted to go to Woodland, I go through the drive-through and then I go, Jesus, just as convenient for me to go out here, take a right, take a right, and I'm gone. As opposed to looping around.
And, and actually, that might be what you have to do if there's excessive queuing because the yellow, that little yellow line doesn't cross the, if the, if the traffic was queued up all along the green.
If it was queued up here.
Well, no, along the green.
The green, the green, the green.
The, the green.
To come in and go out, Mark.
Well, it's coming in, but it would be on the green line, like if they're.
Oh, if, if you are all queued up in here.
If they're all queued up and they're going into the other thing, you can't cross, it's, you know, you'd have to go out that one entrance.
Yeah, but this is going to be, and Patrick didn't really point this out, sorry, Patrick. I'm throwing the end of the bus. But this will be striped so that I think someone asked the question of what happens if, you know, you're all backed up? Well, it is going to be striped to try to guide.
You can always get out that way, but you, it's going to be harder to go all the way around the Dunkin' if there's.
Oh, yeah, oh, correct, correct, correct. Yeah, in, in the morning, I wouldn't expect it, I wouldn't expect it after nine AM, you'd be able to get by and there's plenty of room on the bypass lane. But anyway, so, so any, what I wanted to mention, in the operations analysis, so during the peak hours, you know, the people coming out and trying to take a left to go north currently experience sometimes delay. That's not going to change. You're still going to have delay to make a left turn, but there is capacity on West Boston Street to accommodate them. The right turns don't really have any delay unless you're behind someone who's waiting to take a left. The right-in, right-out operates fine. I think the biggest thing we saw there was, and this was another thing we probably bring up with DOT is to make sure it's signed and, and maybe even tweaked a little bit so that people know you can't take a left turn at that spot, you know?
Did the, was there a police comment about not wanting that right there because it's or somebody's comment about not wanting that right because it comes in the traffic?
The right turn, the right turn. Someone made the comment, I, I don't see any.
It's there now.
It's a right turn.
No, but it's not, but it's.
But it's a right turn. So like if the traffic, if the traffic is queued up there.
Yeah.
Then you just wait until the queue goes and then you make a right turn. You're not conflicting, you're just having to wait. If.
Mr. Chair, I think the, the concern that was expressed at the Board of Appeals meeting, at least the way I understood it, is people were concerned that exiting traffic from the drive-through would immediately turn right and go out the CVS driveway. And that's just not, that's not part of our traffic pattern.
Right, that's, that's.
That's supposed to be a one-way.
That's entering this way and exit this way.
Yeah, the current easement would allow us to do that.
You can't come out of here and then.
The current easement would allow us to do that, but based on some of the comments, Raj, I think you, you made it and we went back out, stood out there and we're like, well, we could do it, but there's plenty, it's plenty convenient to go the other way. So we'd be willing to put a do not enter sign there. And, and I think, I mean, in the afternoon, maybe people would ignore it, I don't know, but it'll be there. Like I said, we stood out there in the morning, we stood out there with the town manager, you know, town administrator, and we're like, you know, we'd be willing to do that, so.
I think, I, I do like that being an entry only so that people aren't trying to zoom
Right, and, and, and as was pointed out earlier, the CVS isn't even open for some of the earlier hours. And, and even though it was open when we stood out there, it's tumbleweeds at CVS, all the traffic was going through the Dunkin', so.
In the rest, in the rest of the, like the rest of the plaza, two forty-four is not open at seven AM. So, so we, we, you know, it's hard to say we had additional mitigation because we've been working pretty closely with Rob and Patrick through this whole process of figuring out what do we do for onsite control and interconnection and all that. But, you know, we do want the driveways clearly marked, the flow of traffic clearly marked. And that's even at two forty-four. So the North and South Drive, you know, whether it's through markings and/or some, some curb extension or whatever, we just really define ins and outs so that there's no conflicts. We don't, we don't have, you know, just kind of awkward movements or angle, you know, right now, I think the North Drive, if you're coming from the North, you can just shoot right in there, right? So, so we're talking about that. We do have to, we believe we have to go to Mass DOT for a permit for this site because of the new, it's an expanded use and new addition to that area. But we haven't really had a conversation with them yet about this site. So we'll see what happens on that. And as I said, we, we have reviewed VHB's comments, haven't responded yet. There's a couple of, a couple of things they want us to double-check on because some of the volumes were collected different times of the year. So we, they want us to check on some of the, the flow balancing and everything through the network as well as, I think there was a question.
That comment has come up.
That, Patrick may bring it up.
That comment has come up also a number of times that, that the data or the data was collected on a low-traffic time at some point. I mean, they, when they were saying like the date was like the Fourth of July or something like that or the January first or something.
I don't think it was the Fourth of July, but.
I mean, it was something like that. It was one of the, it was a not typical day.
No, I, I think it was, but they were different days. And, you know, when we were doing two thirty-five, we had certain data and then two sixty-two came up. So now it was a different time period. We're, we're going to use the same base data where we had it, but then we added a couple of, you know, we made sure.
But I guess in your conclusion, do you think that the data was, after you went and looked and everything like that, do you think it's valid data or do you think it's conservative or?
I, I believe our data is valid. You know, we made adjustments, we looked at seasonal variation, we did whatever we, you know, had to do or could do to, to change it. But we'll, we'll take a look at that comment more specifically. And also the, I think the other, probably more substantive comment, I think VHB had was related to, I think in the twenty-twenty proposal, which was either right before pandemic or during pandemic or right, you know, whatever. It was, a lot of the forecast was based on transactions and I'm not, I don't have that data and I, I don't have that report even, I don't believe. So.
Oh, transactions at his store?
Yeah, that's what the comment was. And so I don't know, when I looked at the numbers that VHB put in the comment, I, my first thought was someone must have made an error in the transaction data to come up with the trip estimate because it was more than double what we were projecting using ITE. And, and the data that we saw at the current Dunkin' does not jive with, you know, doubling our estimate. So, but we'll, we'll double-check, we'll, you know, pull whatever we've got. My guess is the other study might have either doubled, doubled the count on transactions or did something that I, I just don't have. We, we've got actual data at the Dunkin' and that's comparable to what the IT models showed, so I feel, I feel pretty good.
Do, do you have any more presentation or should we go to VHB?
I just.
I do, I do have a question following before you go.
Go ahead.
So at this time, the current Dunkin', people enter to the drive-through and then they can get out the same way to Route twelve, either direction, right? And at this time, people enter to the CVS and then loop around and then they can exit through Woodland, right? And also they can exit through the Route twelve. So with this, we have a cut, we have that opening on the either side from the new Dunkin', are we going to increase because of the, I'm getting a coffee, I want to get out. So we cannot get out at the Route twelve, right?
Yes, you can.
We can get out.
Not at the CVS driveway, you'd have to go back to the Dunkin' driveway.
Around the, around the bigger island.
What, can I get out by the Woodland?
You would have, okay, so you drive, so you come in, you drive around Dunkin', go to the window. You would have to drive around the Dunkin' again to get behind it to the bypass lane to get onto the CVS lot. So you'd have to drive around Dunkin' twice to go to Woodland Street.
Can you, please?
The only people.
Get my coffee, after that, can I go to the Woodland?
Under the proposed, the proposed, you could. You could go around the Dunkin', come out disconnecting, drive, come down CVS and then out, take a right on Woodland.
But, but this is just because of, we can go all the way.
Let me just point out that you're coming in, right? You're coming into Dunkin'.
Yeah.
You have to do this.
Yeah.
To get your coffee. Now you're here, now I want to go to Woodland. I have to go all the way around the building to do that.
So they won't go there.
It's not, unless you're going that way or you're going to CVS, you're not going to do that.
So once I get the coffee, I cannot go to the Route twelve too, right, from here?
Uh, you can, you can go back out this way.
No, not, not the CVS cut.
In CVS, CVS can.
You didn't even refer to it.
The CVS can go out, but after getting your coffee, I cannot.
You can't take a right?
You can, you'd, you'd loop all the way around.
You'd have to go around the building, you'd have to go around Dunkin' again, then go around CVS again.
You can't take a right?
Yeah, okay.
You can't take this, you can't go right immediately.
That's, that's right. That's what he was asking, I believe.
So that discourages, that, you know, looping around will discourage people to go to the.
It's going to make them go to the two forty-four. Unless you, unless you're, you like, you live over here, you're not going to do that because.
So my, my thing, my only concern is, you know, the Woodland is already a very busy, not busy, yes, it is a busy, and also the traffic is coming in this side. If they want to go the, to the Route twelve, so they have to pass that, you know, land and the traffic is coming land, so there, there is a possibility of accident. So I don't want.
Well, if it's really zacked up, but normally, no.
Right, right, it's much, it's much more possibility of an accident what's going on right now. Right here, if you stand here in the morning, it's people going four different directions all in this spot.
It's because it's a huge asphalt.
Right.
Battleground.
Yeah, with no, with no markings and you have enough.
So my only concern is, you know, I feel we are not going to increase any traffic more than whatever the traffic now in the Woodland Street.
We're already here. So any customers we're attracting, we're already attracting. Uh, we'll just be able to stack them better and probably serve them more quickly because the layout will be a modern layout. We'll do it to our current standards. That's a 25 year old design inside there.
If I am going to loop around in, I mean, I that discourages the people not to go to the.
Yeah, you wouldn't drive around the building twice.
CVS.
I would.
Yeah, well, unless you're going to CVS or you're going that way to go home.
Well, if you were going to go purposefully, they would.
And as far as like the planning board and the town and other, what I think is also a benefit is the people that come from the North and want to go to CVS. Right now, they have to go through the intersection, take the right at the light, go into CVS, leave, go back through the light.
Intersection.
But now they can come in and they can get to CVS by going in front of Dunkin's.
They can go in that first right cut.
Or you can go through the first right cut, but then to leave, you have to go through the light. Just let those people go out through way past all the traffic.
Right, yeah. As our engineers said, it it's designed to take
a little bit of load off.
Traffic off.
But like you said, there's crickets of traffic from CVS, so there probably is not noticeable, but it is.
In the afternoon, it's busy. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, I I gotta hand it to like you guys, the town, but not every town encourages the interconnects between houses. Something traffic planners, we've been talking about
Yeah.
up here for years, right? So you've done that and it's sort of between that and Dunkin's peak is in the morning, CVS is is after the peak.
Oh, they sort of complement each other, I guess.
A lot of positives, yeah.
That connection between between the two properties really makes a big difference.
Yes.
Compared to what was proposed before.
Correct, yeah.
It was much more convoluted before.
Well, before.
Before it was warm.
We weren't able to connect all of this. And this is a a much better design. We built some properties out in Ohio where you don't have these older buildings, like vacant land, old farmland, right? So you could design it, you would design it that way if if you were starting from a blank piece of paper. We're sort of making it into that now with the an existing site in an already developed area.
Any more questions? Or I was going to get to VHB so that we can get out this evening sometime.
Go ahead. Do you want to do the traffic first or you want, since we're sort of in our memory or do you want to do?
That's up to you folks. Um, I'm traffic, he's civil.
Why don't we, since we're all just talking about the traffic right now, why don't you review what you what your thoughts are on their analysis?
Sure. And I'm assuming everyone has the letter we put together. Um, in the interest of time, I can kind of go over the high points as opposed to reading.
I don't have it in front of me, but do it.
Okay, yeah, you don't want to read through every line here. Um, so yes, um, I generally agree with pretty much everything Mr. Scully and the project team just said regarding the operation and happy to answer questions or add more input on that. As far as the review goes, he went through a nice detailed overview of how a traffic study is done. The one thing he mentioned that we had kind of flagged, um, the traffic counts. This is actually kind of helpful. They were done during a bunch of different months. Some were from the study across the street, some were more recent. And in doing so, you kind of eliminate the possibility of counting an off day when you have a bunch of data to draw from. We did not have any comment on our end saying that these were underestimated or counted in bad days. They were good days. They just weren't necessarily the same days. So because of that, and he had mentioned this in his presentation, sometimes you're going to have a case where, and these are numbers I'm just sort of making up here. You have 500 cars departing the signal heading north, but because you counted in a different day to the north, only 400 are showing up. Hundred cars didn't disappear. It's just traffic fluctuates day to day. So what I suggested was revisiting that and balancing it is the term. Um, and I'll get to why I don't think it's really a huge concern. This is more just kind of dotting the i's level of detail here. So I think between me and Mr. Scully, we'll easily resolve that one. Um, he had discussed a crash analysis, the sight lines at the driveways and the projection of the future volumes, all of which we agree with how that's done. And he did include the mixed use development across the street. Uh, so we have a good solid base of what this is going to look like in the future without the project. Probably a good time to interject on this one. He had the point that um we're moving collectively the Dunkin' Donuts from one site to the other, but yet they did not deduct that existing traffic. Where it would have been complicated to do that, but it probably would have been more realistic to do it. So when we're talking about increased traffic from this project, I'm surprisingly more in the camp that it's probably virtually a wash, not much of an increase, just because it's going from one spot to the other. Now, the existing store, no offense, the layout isn't the best over there, so there may be people avoiding it. So you might get a little bit of a bump. But effectively in his analysis, he assumed that one existing Dunkin' Donuts remains and another is built. So it's definitely overstating the volumes, which is good.
Do you agree with his conclusion that uh that it it's still even even it though it it would appear that that would double the volume that you're seeing and it's not kind of real because they're just moving? Do you agree that it's still?
Simply put, he's overstating it. And that's a good way to do it. It's safer. It's better to be wrong on overestimating in this case than underestimating it. Then you're left with extra traffic you don't know how to deal with. So just a point, I strongly agree with that statement, I guess.
And on his, uh, you mentioned when you did a actual go out there and watch the traffic go by compared to the analysis prediction, he said it was higher in the morning, lower in the evening. Did I didn't I sort of understand, but did you sort of dig into that to see if that's significant?
Um, yeah, and that's a nice segue. The next comment we had was about the trip generation, how much traffic this new facility or relocated facility is going to generate. And uh, it was good. They did the standard ITE textbook approach of what it would generate based on the building size and then compared it to isolated counts of the facility. And it sounds like it was, you know, an engineering world fairly close. Um, I also took a look. You can actually estimate traffic for these things based on the amount of street traffic driving by where it's proportional. The reason Dunkin is here is because there's already traffic, a good amount commuter traffic in the street. So ITE has a way of estimating it that way, and it would have come out about the same. So um, the approach definitely I'm on board with. The one thing that gave me pause, as I mentioned, and this wasn't a um Kinley Horn study, the prior study from 2020 using the transaction data had a notably higher volume projected. So I just wanted that explored a little bit further to make sure nothing was being missed. Uh, again, different engineer did that, so I'm certainly not holding him to that. Um, the transactions themselves, um, not really a big fan of using transaction data. I've probably done it at some point in my career. But the problem you have with the Dunkin' Donuts, if Nate and I decide to go to Dunkin together, I'm going to buy my coffee. I'm kind of a jerk, so he's going to have to buy his own. Two transactions, one car.
Right.
And then you get kids, you go in with the kids and oh, I want a chocolate milk. So you go back up to the counter. So it muddies the waters where if you can just count cars, where he seemed pretty confident he was able to isolate it.
I I would I would agree with that from my recollection from that period. Of course, it was like peak COVID and 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 there was like Bill was able to go out and count actual cars, right? So you know exactly what's happening. We have real data. Then people were estimating, and that's an excellent point, it was probably units they were counting, not really, not even transactions. So like four people in a car, that's four units instead of really one. It shouldn't be one.
Though I have seen those level of volumes at other sites, but again, he has actual counts, he has observations, and it's consistent with kind of the textbook approach, as I call it. So it needs a little bit of investigation to make sure we're not missing anything. Uh, but even if it is higher, um, I'm not that concerned, which is a segue into the next one, the pass by traffic. Mr. Scully had talked about using roughly 50% of it being the people driving on their way to work, pull in, get the coffee, continue on their way. Years and years ago, I used to work in a lot of these and we did surveys of Dunkin' Donuts customers and consistently seeing 75%, even 90% being passed by, um, in particular during the morning peak period. Not a lot of people specifically leave their house to go to Dunkin' Donuts. It's usually on the way to work, dropping off the kids to school. It's an impulse trip. So even if he comes back and says, yes, our trip generation is higher, but we're still using the 50% pass by. You know, it's probably still the impact on the signal in particular, that traffic's already driving by either way. So, you know, it's good to document, but I think the big picture, um, he's using, um, you know, conservative counts done over multiple days, the trip generation, I think we're going to come to agreement on. And the pass by, I think they're understating it, which is good because it's, he's overestimating how many new cars are going to show up on the street. So so far, so good in that aspect, if that makes sense.
Good, yeah.
Drive through queuing, this was really a lot of the um, the focus. The bar's been set pretty low next door as to the drive through layout through no fault of anyone. It's just a weirdly positioned site. So this offers more of a prototypical layout. Um, by my math, the 279 foot queue immediately next to the Dunkin building would give you about 12 cars, maybe 13, which is consistent with what he said. If you have a few Mini Coopers, maybe it gets to 14 or, you know, but that magnitude. Uh, industry standard, you want to have at least 10 in the designated marked drive through lane. So they're meeting that standard. Um, the graphic Mr. Scully had showed with the cars wrapping up and around. I know on occasion that kind of thing happens over here. I think it's less likely here. Once you have that long of a line, um, you know, 14, would I say 13? Let's say 13 cars makes it easier. Uh, the transactions are generally 30 seconds a transaction. Once you get to the window, they turn them over every 30 seconds. That's old data I had. So that means that line of traffic, if it's all the way to the back, is about six and a half minutes. If you pull in and see the traffic as far back as he was showing, you don't know the 30 seconds per car thing, but you know you're not getting out of there anytime soon. So you're either going to pull over and use one of the new parking spaces or there's other, you know, I I mentioned this to someone earlier. I pass by eight Dunkin' Donuts on the way to work. So there's other facilities, certainly not as nice as his, but there's other facilities. And you may have guessed I stopped at a few, go figure. So I think the drive through is a very good improvement. I don't foresee it getting back to West Boylston Street, but the point is valid that you could certainly stack them that far before it impacts the public. Um, you're not going to impact CVS at that time of day. There's not much going on at the existing Dunkin Plaza, and that also has another driveway. So I think it's a reasonable um, drive through layout with the spacing assumptions that are there. The distribution, that's the same way we estimated. It's kind of proportional based on where the traffic is. And I think a lot of the interests from what I'm hearing from you folks is on Woodland. You know, how much, I think it was 15% coming from Woodland. That's a function of kind of 15% of the global traffic already being on Woodland. Um, some people on Woodland may specifically leave their house to get coffee, but if you're coming or going from that driveway, there's a strong likelihood you live to the west on Woodland, you're getting coffee and then you're continuing through the signal to work. That's just a gut feel, can't really prove it, but that's kind of how these things tend to work out.
Well, it's a win when you go through, you don't go through the signal if you go out there and take a left.
Yeah, I was, um, I did have a comment initially questioning, do we even need that connection? But, you know, it is in the bylaws and like Mr. Scully said, it's a good practice. Anytime you can consolidate internal curb cuts and get them out of the signal, one or two cars aren't going to make a huge difference at the signal, but if you can get them out, you know, why not? So and in that why not, at some point in here, we talk about it, the um, some minor signage improvements to make it clear. You know, what what's one way this way, you know, uh, no left turn signs, things of that nature, which will be easily addressed between Patrick and Mr. Scully.
At the, I forget, maybe it was the ZBA hearing, I asked about a do not block the box idea at that intersection so that people don't come out of CVS and try to take the left and log jam people coming through the light.
Um, I did look at that and I've done them in my own projects in the past. The queue does, independent of this project, it already goes past the CVS driveway. I want to say weekday evening peak hour. Um, and based on the numbers, it wasn't like a mile down the street, but it was three or four cars past the driveway. So that sort of treatment could be striped if it's something the board felt strongly about. Um, I didn't necessarily think it was needed. That queue length reported in the study doesn't happen instantly. Once the light turns red, it'll build up slowly as cars arrive. So it's not like that's continually blocked 24/7. It's just at certain times, within the busiest hour of the afternoon, the worst 95th percentile condition, it's blocked. So if it's something, again, you feel strongly about, you know, we're just talking paint here. I don't think anyone would have major objections and it's a town road. Uh, I just don't know if it was absolutely critical. Or a do not block the intersection sign in the absence of that, um, if that's something to be considered.
I would note, though, that that's the CVS lot. That's not ours.
But you I think you're putting signs. Aren't you putting like an entrance sign or?
We have an agreement for for that, although they didn't request that we have a do not an exit sign there. We're doing that, but we can, that's something they're going to be okay with.
Could you?
We have the right to use it anyway.
You're talking, you're talking Woodland Street.
I'm talking the public roadway, Woodland Street, striping and or signage there if desired.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So like right in here.
I'm going to pull out the CVS and block the road.
Yeah.
I mean, it's amazing what some people do, but.
I guess that's that's a that's town property. Well, that's town property.
It's town road, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then again, those wouldn't be our customers in the afternoon.
Right.
Moving on, and I will stop eventually. I do promise that. So taking a look at his volumes, once he balances them, if he decides that's appropriate. Uh, the trip generation, maybe it's slightly higher. And um, the distribution, actually, I think there was some traffic coming out the CVS driveway, which is probably a little overstated based on the circulation pattern he showed. But the long and short of it, if it ends up that we are analyzing a slightly higher volume along West Boylston Street, the exiting movements from the unsignaled driveway on paper would get worse. And the one thing the software we use as an industry isn't great with, there's a signal obviously right here, which will consistently stop northbound traffic, not all the time, but enough that you get some breaks where you can turn left out of these driveways. It's still not easy, uh, any time, peak times a day, but that's something that isn't reflected in the analysis. So on paper, it might show the delays increasing, but that's offset, I think, by that signal there. So long and short of it is not very concerned with, um, I am very concerned with the operation of the driveways. I just don't think there's going to be issues with there. And I think it's a vast improvement, what we're proposing here. So overall, the study, I think between Mr. Scully and I, we can resolve that. Site plan, I think we covered a lot of this already as far as the traffic acts, um, aspects. The access permit, we, um, they mentioned the need for that. Um, I'm pretty sure I did the review for 235 and I think there was a condition that when they went for their access permit, they had to talk to Mass DOT about the signal timings and perhaps there's an adjustment that could be made to West, um, Woodland Street to help minimize some of those delays. Uh, not a huge undertaking and it probably ends up being something a guy from the district goes out in the cabinet and adjusts it if it's appropriate. So I think that condition is already there. If that project was to disappear for some reason, that that could be passed on to this one as part of the access permit, um, as far as looking at the signal timings again.
Was there also discussion about making the northbound Route 12 light a protected left? Did someone bring that up?
Um, that I do not recall making that comment. I could check. So.
Down Woodland and take a left to northbound?
No, coming up West Boylston Street and taking a left.
Taking a left onto Woodland?
Like right now, there's an arrow, but it's but it's the same light.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you sit, I think that people commented that you sit there waiting for the traffic to go and then if there's a lot of traffic, like one car gets through, one car gets through.
In, um, I guess fairness to the applicant, I'm not sure this project, how much of a demand it would be adding to that maneuver where if I'm coming up
Probably nothing.
Going to Dunkin, I'm going to go up to the Dunkin. Um, traffic off Woodland, I think, is going to be coming from the west. People coming in that way. There's always going to be one or two, but.
Right. No, it's just if we're bringing it up with DOT and we're asking them to check the cycle, maybe delayed delayed left or something. I don't.
Yep.
People will do that once.
Right.
Turn left there and go for the CVS to get to Dunkin, to do it once.
Oh, no, it's it's.
You mean everybody in time.
It wasn't that they were doing that to go in. It was that they were doing that to.
That's not going to be the 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 best way to go. After that, there were really just some um, minor signage enhancements, I think, to, you know, make clear what's one way, no left this way. So I don't think we need to belabor that. Um, and I think those are changes. Uh, we did talk earlier today, um, Patrick and I and Nathan. Um, so I think a lot of these we've already had like a path to resolving them. So I think I'm finally going to stop talking, but I think overall, we're in a good position to wrap this up, working with the project team. And uh, any questions you folks have, I'd be happy to look into.
Did you, the 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 layout of some of these, like the when you come out of the drive through to make sure you can't take a right, you you put up the signs. Is there a layout that you could put in there so that it's awkward to turn? a layout that you could put in there so that it's awkward to turn, like, put a little kick out or something?
I was actually doodling.
Spikes, yeah.
They do it once, right? And they're stuck there all day drinking coffee, win-win. I was doodling something like that. Coming out of the drive-through, I don't think there's anything physically you can do to prevent it, you can discourage it, but I don't think there's any sort of physical curvature you could put in that would block it. And we also have to make sure that the fire truck can still make it around. So there might be a slight little bump possible, but, you know, it's just, I don't think it, they're going to have a one-way sign in front of them, anyone doing it.
Knows they're not doing.
Yeah, so they know they're being wrong, but.
Okay.
So I don't think that little change would matter much. Good comment, though, I had the same thought.
Anything else? All right, you're on.
All right, yeah, if it's okay with the board, I'll also abbreviate and then hit the major points.
Yeah, just that, have you got any comments, have you discussed anything?
No, just verbally, we discussed.
That's what I mean, but I mean, like, if there's any showstoppers or something like that, make sure you bring those ones up, but just do what's on the other.
Yeah, I'll just hit the major points, yep, okay. Yeah, so a lot of my comments really had to do with the property lines and the lease agreements. So Patrick spoke to me today and kind of explained that in detail. So I think we're going to be receiving like a formal explanation of what those agreements are. So like, the first comment that I had on that really is just like, so that we can see that and receive that and make sure that, you know, in the future, if, if some of the businesses are property in our strange hands, that their, the service roads can still be maintained.
Yeah, that was sort of the discussion about the, it'll be on the deed, so it doesn't disappear.
Well, the Wyatts that are leasing us that property, their concern is okay, in year two, we default, and we close. They, they have the, you know, whatever approval that you feel able to give, and whatever we get from ZBA, they could still be able to use it, but we're showing parking spaces on our land, so we've agreed, yes, no, we will not take that away from you. But our intent is to buy this parcel.
Eventually.
And we feel like that's something that's going to happen in the next few years, and then we would, we would either have to use a separate entity or come back for an A&R plan, we understand that. And then to keep those easements in place. And there already is currently an easement in place between CVS and the grasslot parcel.
Yes, okay, I mean, I think to address his concern, that's what we have to continue.
Okay, the next comment has to do with the lot size of the developable, the lot that they're trying to develop. It's currently .79 acres, which is, the requirement is one acre, but it seems like through the easements there and the developable land that they're developing, they're actually going to be above that one acre with the easement, but just seeing.
Okay. I mean, we might have to ask town council how they make that work out.
You could just have a condition that we provide you a copy with the easement after we record it.
Well, just to make sure that lot size plus easement is valid for meeting the requirement, I guess, is the whole thing.
Well, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
When this was previously reviewed, the building inspector did not raise the lot compliance as.
I don't think it'll be an issue, I just want to make sure that we do what we're supposed to do, that's all.
We can get, you know, an opinion from the building inspector saying that.
It's good.
What's proposed is appropriate for that size of an existing.
Actually, do you want to reach out to him and?
Yeah, we reached out to the building inspector.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next comment. Patrick agreed that they will be doing test pits prior to construction to make sure that the soils, they only have one on-site now, that the regulations require more than that, so they'll be doing test pits before.
But you still, you have a good reason to believe that the groundwater is low enough that the subsurface detention will be okay?
Yes, we're required to provide four feet of separation to groundwater. If we're providing less than that, then we'd have to do a mounting analysis, but with the type of soils that we're finding, with the sand deposits, either way, you know, the system is still going to function as it's designed to function.
Yeah, I wasn't aware that there weren't enough test pits, I'm trying to get away from a surprise that comes up when we dig a test pit in the middle of it and say, what the heck?
Well, that's exactly what Nathan was pointing out, you know, we don't want surprises during construction either, because we've all been there.
Right. Perfect.
Stormwater, there, the other stormwater comments, there really weren't any other showstoppers, so I, I mean, I can move forward, or we can talk about them if you'd like.
Any interesting highlights?
It's stormwater, Mr. Chair, it's not, it's not.
There's none there now.
We did talk about the roof runoff, and Patrick informed me that it would just be condensate, sorry, we were talking about the mechanical equipment on the roof, and Patrick informed me that it would just be condensate that would be coming from that, so that's not an issue, that that goes to stormwater, that's considered clean.
Oh, okay.
So I guess the other one is that the overflow for the site is one of the catch basins that is right in the dri, one of the northern driveway. Thank you.
Who is it?
Yep.
So during the 25-year storm event, they are reducing the peak runoff, but I just wanted to point out that the overflow is a concentrated flow that would be going out to West Boylston, so in that large storm event, it might, it might impact, but they are going through DOT with you too, so I think.
So it does discharge the street? I thought that we were just.
Yeah, so the rules that we're facing with DOT, we cannot increase the peak rate of flow going to the state highway.
Okay.
So our system meets that, you know, design standard. However, it's pointed out that currently we have sheet flow coming off a grass area, now we're going to have a catch basin backing up and coming down the gutter, so it's, the flow's a little bit different.
Moves it around, okay.
So we just have to verify.
But it's still within the DOTs?
If it's not acceptable to DOT, we've got to, you know, increase the size of our mitigation system.
Okay.
Okay. Another comment I had that, is that they are revising some parking in the 244 property with the development, and I just wanted to point out that the parking should be reviewed as far as like the ADA count. If they are increasing parking, that might put them over the threshold to include another handicap parking space.
What do you think?
This is for the plaza parcel we're talking about, so if we add, if we add these seven parking spaces, he wants us to look at our ratio of accessible spaces versus the total.
For the whole rest of the plaza?
For the plaza, to be sure that's in compliance, so we've agreed to take a look at that.
The current bypass lane through, through the, through the lot is a little undersized, but Patrick informed me that they'd be looking at that to bring it to size, so that it's, it's currently about six feet. But it looks like that could get resolved by just changing that bump out a little bit.
What, it's at four?
There's a pinch point, so if you want the bypass lane to go fully past the drive-through.
So they can circle and leave on north?
Then we need to widen that lane a bit, so that, where you see that sort of little triangle of green, we'd have to take away some of the green to widen it.
Is that doable?
We can do, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, all right.
We talked about the accessible, accessible parking spot that is in the top right corner, that just needs, we need some access to the building from that space, so just a crosswalk across.
Is that designed for, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but is that, those parking spots on the, that side of the green, is that designed for the new Dunkins, or is that designed for the old parcel?
These spaces here?
Yes.
Well, we wanted to make it clear to the town that we're taking away the drive-through use on that property, so we're showing, you know, painting some parking spaces and adding some green space in here, that would preclude that for the use of.
But your comment is, for those.
So this question here is about this accessible space.
Oh, okay.
We need to paint a crosswalk to get, from the wheelchair space to the entrance.
I'm sorry, I was thinking it was the other one, okay, thank you.
So, that, I assume that there won't be any drive-throughs on that existing place?
Um, we would be, if it would be a change of use, they would have to come back where, whatever it was there. We've got.
Well, you put that, I put that part.
And, and if it was a modern drive-through, we'd run around the building, and the grade changes are crazy back there, so. We had one bank inquire that really wanted to go into the space, but they said they needed to have a drive-through, so we said, no, we need to get this done. And I doubt the town would want two drive-throughs right next to each other, particularly since we're solving that drive-through problem right now.
Well, unless you did the wraparound back, but you said that would be.
That, that would be a site redesign, and we're not prepared to, we would have to present that to you.
Okay.
That would be another process, and it would be a different use, so.
Oh, those, the spaces that are in the old drive-through lane, you said that there might be a grade change there, are they going to be pedestrian accessible to the Duncan, or they, is there going to be too much of a hill or something? You were mentioning that that.
You're talking about the skinny green spot, right, Mark?
Yeah, is, could there be, do you need steps, or?
There is a grade change between there, so if those spaces.
Pretty minor, though, isn't it?
If you find that you need them for the Duncan, it's likely that they would be employee spaces, so they would show up in the morning and just stay there.
Stay there.
Peak time, and not have them turn over for customers.
But they could walk, I mean, they'd be.
They can walk up the driveway easily, sure.
Oh, they'd walk around through the driveway?
Can't walk up the landscaping street.
Okay. And you don't want that to be a stair or something, so they could just walk up?
No, stairs on a situation like that present additional liability, so we try to avoid them.
And we have winter here, so.
Yeah, they'd be covered with snow, right. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so the next couple of comments are about turning movements. Patrick already submitted some fire turning movements and reviewed them with the fire department, they did not have any comments. I haven't looked at them yet, but the fire department's okay with them.
Did, when you, did he say okay, or?
Yeah, we had the department head meeting, actually, you were there, and the fire chief had, he had very specific comments about very specific points on the plan, and Patrick redesigned it in.
Oh, since then, okay.
Yes, and it's been distributed, so.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't heard anything back after that.
Okay, so it was, it was back then, after, not since the water department asked about the fire hydrant? We haven't, we haven't asked about that?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, the next few comments really have to do with utilities. Patrick said that they're going to be revising that utility plan, and I'll review it when I see that.
To be more complete, is that one of the comments?
Each utility has a different idea about how the building should be connected than I have, so we have a little bit of work to do to straighten that out.
We did talk about the, and I commented here, about the 24-foot drive aisle on the, on the planned north side of the building. Right now, it's, it's unclear whether or not that would be like one-way or two-way traffic.
Are you speaking about this?
Uh, sorry.
No, in, I just decided I have privacy.
Right in this area?
Oh.
So we had shown a single directional arrow, this is, this really should be a two-way traffic aisle, because it's 24 feet wide. So if you were coming to drive into the parking lot.
Or you could leave.
You can go back around the building to get out, we want them to still get out here.
I was going to ask you where that traffic would be generated that would be going the other way, but I guess that's only people leaving those spaces.
And then last major comment was cut fill analysis, which Patrick said that, I think you'll be delivering that to us next.
Yeah, I haven't prepared that yet, Mr. Chair, but we can look at that, something that will be useful for the construction.
Yeah, if it gets to be, I forget the threshold, but the earth removal board, whatever, if you, if you get above their threshold, you have to go to them, but.
We're hoping we're under that threshold, so we won't know until we do notice.
Okay.
That was it, that was.
That's it?
Yep.
Any more comments, any questions for V H P?
I have a general question about the design. I go by this particular plaza, the current plaza and the exist, the proposed plaza, every day. In the mornings, I see a lot of larger vehicles with trailers, you know, dump trucks with a trailer or something to it. I'm looking at the design, and I don't see a lot of ability to pull in and get out in with some types of vehicles like that. Looks pretty tight.
So, again, the advantage of us owning that plaza is that, like what happens if you're familiar with our site in Boylston on 140, we have a huge number of those kind of vehicles, plus all the, the box trucks from FedEx. So what they generally do, will park alongside or over in that, in that plaza, and they'll get out and walk over. Most of them will not try to go through the drive-through.
Understood, yeah. I didn't know if, so the, basically what you're saying is, they would still kind of do that?
We can, we can accommodate them the same way we accommodate them now, they can, there's a lot of places for them to park. And actually, our site further down West Boylston Street, just across the Worcester line, we get a fair amount of that, too, and they park along the backside where the train tracks are. And the guys in the train stop the train and get out and come in.
But I didn't, I agree with you that, because when I'm pulling a trailer, I'm also parking in the, off to the back or somewhere out of the way. I'm just wondering if, are we, are we going to be able to pull in there and get to the back, or is that, it just looks a little tight, I don't know that, I can't see the dimensions, but it just looks a little tight with the green coming around and.
I think, I think you may not be able to park in 244.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you park in the plaza and walk over.
In this situation.
Okay, so, so what you're suggesting is not to be able to do that in this new plaza?
If you're pulling a backhoe, you're not going to come in.
I get that, but, you know, sometimes it's, it's a, you know, a landscaping trailer or something to that effect.
Right. And again, like, most, all the businesses in 244 are going to be closed in the morning, so there'll be plenty of places to park a trailer and walk over and, and walk into the store.
Are you changing the parking layout at 244 at all?
Unless we need to add some handicap spaces, as we just discussed, and depending, I mean, the current uses we have there, we don't really see them turning over, we have one vacancy, actually just showed it right before I came here. And it's going to be a small retail use, an elderly lady that used to be in the plaza years ago, two doors down from the Duncan, wants to move back there, so I don't really see much changing there.
Okay, there's one line along the street and one line along the stores, yep.
And the ones by the drive-through being eliminated.
Right, and, and parking in the old drive-throughs.
Yes.
Or existing drive-through, excuse me.
We had one question from the, Ms. Noise in the chat, she says, what is I T E?
How many customers do you sell?
What?
How many customers do they sell, and they have said 100.
Oh, what is I T E? Several times the last words we have. Said 100, how much more?
Yeah, I don't know what's the chat, I don't know.
Well, the I T E was the standard that you.
I T E is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, that is a organization where we compile a lot of traffic data and develop models to forecast traffic.
Can, Ms. Noise, can you hear, okay? Oh, is that microphone on?
Mm-hmm.
Control room, are we having trouble?
Nope, he just, the microphone was.
Oh, not close.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So I T E is, stands for the Institute of Transportation Engineers, it's a professional organization where we collect and compile awful lot of traffic data, and we develop models for different land uses to enable us to forecast traffic.
And then, that's it, that's the last four years, and employees have concerned, and said they said 100.
Oh, that's the transaction question, it sounds like.
How many, how many transactions per day?
That one we covered, that was an estimate from a prior traffic engineer, and I think that was units.
It seems to be some confusion.
If I was doing 1,000 customers a day. If I was doing a thousand customers a day, I'd be very happy, but that, that site could not accommodate that.
Probably more like a thousand coffees.
Yeah, yeah, maybe. And she said employees said that, so I don't, I mean, I'm somebody that's working there a four to six hour shift, wouldn't know how many customers we do a day.
Accounting.
Yeah, I mean, and plus they'll all tell you, is it busy? Oh, it's crazy, it's crazy, and then I'll look and I'll see, you only have fifteen cars. Like, how is that so, it's perspective, yeah.
If I could add to that, the traffic study itself has, if I'm reading it right, one thousand one hundred and sixty-four daily trips. So that would be, you know, five something in, five something out. A lot of the volumes he had put up were hourly, so it was certain references to a hundred cars, that's hourly.
Right, like the thousand would be a thousand per day is what you're saying?
Yeah, so that's, most of the traffic study analysis tends to be oriented to like the busiest hour of the day, not the day in a global sense. So that might, you know, be some, you know, of the confusion.
Ms. Noyes, are you, are you okay with that, that it seems like a thousand is transactions, not visits? Yep? You're muted.
There we go. This employee has been there for many, many years. And over the last five years, since this project was proposed, what, five years ago? We've asked her a bunch of times and she goes, we do a thousand customers a day. I've asked her numerous times and, and we've asked other people too, but she's the one, she's been around a long time. So I think your, your estimates are a little bit low, so.
I mean, it seems like there's some.
Well, we, we have actual car counts of the cars that went by, so I.
Right, no, it seems, it seems to me the thousand reference is, is a, is a confusing number.
Right.
Per history.
Well, I, I.
And that's over the course of a day, we're, we're looking at.
Correct, it is a day, only a week.
One sixty-minute hour in the morning, one sixty-minute hour in the afternoon.
So if you're doing forty-three an hour, it doesn't add up to a thousand a day?
Exactly, yeah.
But you're doing forty-three cars.
We're also talking vehicles, Mr. Chairman, we're not talking, you know, customers or, or service. You could have someone come in as, Mr. Duncan.
Either way, I think it's under us today.
Two people in a car, both are gonna have a transaction.
I go there constantly and there's way more traffic than you guys are, are reporting, so. Okay, that's my comment, thank you.
So it seems, I mean, it seems like it's, that would be four per car, four coffees or something's per car.
Or a dozen donuts is one transaction, but it's twelve items, I, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not sure what we're counting, but we have actual car counts.
Yeah, right, and, and I think we've reviewed and reviewed and reviewed and we're trying to make sure that we're in the right ballpark. Also, like you, well, everybody mentioned, it's really moving the traffic, so there's not that much, it should be roughly similar to what it was, hopefully. I mean, not, not, maybe if people do come there because it's new, but mostly it'll be repeat customers. Any more comments? We have one more, we only have one public. Well, all right, so I think we, we can continue the hearing to, I guess, the next meeting and you can work out the differences, you can revise drawings and, and.
When is the next meeting?
I don't know when it is, it's.
Generally the second Wednesday every month.
I don't know the date though.
Make sure I'm in town.
September thirteenth. The tenth of September.
September tenth?
That would be when it was typically done, yep.
Yep. I mean, do you think that's enough to address what you need to address?
I do, yes.
Okay, all right, so then we'll continue this hearing to there, do we close the, do we continue the hearing?
Continue.
Yeah, do we make a motion to that?
Motion to continue until September?
Second?
Ten.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, we're not, nobody's remote, so there's.
Thank you.
Aye, we're passed, thank you for coming in, thank you.
Thank you both, everybody.
Recording stopped.
Oh, no, not recording stopped. We still have meeting to go.
Recording in progress.
Thank you.
No, we didn't go to the court, he just has a. So he hasn't, so the, the ownership of, on a. Mr. Scher, is Bernie, he'll do you an extra so you can go home, that's what we do.
Says that he is the, the manager.
Sole, yeah, sole owner-manager member of, of Justice for E R E L S.
This is LLC, so he's authorized to do what he's doing, that's all. So, and he did, he got notarized, there's the thing that says that he's the person, the operating agreement. So that was the extra thing that we had to do, that was the complicated part. But I think the drawing's fine, I think that the forms, oh, you have the check.
Yes, checks are important.
Checks, yes.
We have to sign something, right, Mark?
Yeah, I'm gonna get the marker and I'm gonna sign these and if you get them.
We have to sign on my line?
Yes, with them.
What was it? Oh, okay.
It's a, that's the top one.
It, it looks different.
It looks like the, I was thinking the fee was application fee and two lots for total three hundred.
Where?
And it looks like everything's, well, I have a fast one, so everything's okay.
Why don't we do this first?
We have a miler. I don't know.
And you sit through all that?
And I was gonna get them to do the same form.
I'm gonna get some of the refill of water.
Oh, we have to make the number. Yes. So you can start signing, uh, sign and put this number on, eight one three. So that's the, whatever the registered number. E two, yes. Oh, yeah, the first one, the second one. If you can start to sign here, actually we can spread them out. Is it? Those ones look like paper, that's, that's, that's all yours.
Do you, do you sign it before approving it?
Oh, so you wanna make a motion to endorse this? I'll make a motion. Your second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oh, just somewhere like here, yes, somewhere here, yeah. Okay, the motion was by. Paul made the motion, second by Kevin, and we all voted in favor.
I'm gonna let you write the, the number on these, Paul, I'm just gonna sign. You're, you're getting good at the numbers, Mark.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so that's on there. Oh, is it signed okay on the paper with that marker?
Yeah.
All right.
You're up.
Wanna sign? You're right here on that. Roz, you have to sign. Who wants to sign for Frank?
You can't sign for Frank.
I know.
That's a big traffic model. Traffic gentleman.
Well, I'm getting out of the way, I'll be right back.
Oh, man. Yes, it's even real there. In here, we can spread them out just so that we can. Just go this one. Hold all those down. Oh, and then you gotta go to, I guess after this, you go to the fire department to get numbers assigned for the.
New lot.
Yeah, for the house that would be on the new lot, I don't know if it cares, yeah, just get it, I guess.
I think it was to go to the branding department.
I know, we just, but we just changed that byline. Is it, just, yeah, just at the last town meeting? Because I guess the fire department likes them to make sense, so they can actually figure out where the houses are.
Any of the towns.
Well, where you need.
Branding department.
Why, no, no.
You can use the head.
Hands are not working.
Oh, you have a pen?
I have a pen.
Okay, sign it.
You have this one?
Yeah, you can sign, you can sign, that's okay. That one is not working. Yeah, here, Mark, sign.
Oh, where's the trash?
Give it to me. This is amazing, I must ask.
Yeah. Oh, while we're signing, we also have to sign the book, so that we can authorize transactions. Kevin, I think you missed one.
I did?
Yeah, the first one.
First one? I said that one.
No, I was.
Oh, this one? Wait.
Only meetings you have every week. At least two to three. No, that is, love meeting. This is the second meeting in four months. If you sign this, you can get out.
No, we have to at least start the other hearing.
Yep.
So.
But he can get out.
No, you can take this one and get out, right, with miler only we are giving, right?
Did you all, all assign it?
Yeah, all assigned.
Yeah, you can, you can take that one and then the other ones just go to like the building department and stuff here.
Okay.
So let him say, yes, and.
You wanna participate in the, uh, file review?
I mean, it sounds exciting.
It does.
I sense sarcasm there.
Can you give me that pen, Mark?
Okay.
Okay, so this one, all done, all three?
Yep.
Oh, Kevin, no, Raj.
Someone is missing here, Paul?
Me.
Mark, maybe?
Yeah.
No, I'm missing.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, I'm waiting, yeah, Mark too. All right, go, go sign, I'll hold things.
Here you go.
Here you go, this one.
I'm done.
I think we're done.
All right.
Four signatures, right?
Yeah. All right, I'll roll this up in there.
What's planned, filled on it or?
Yeah. I dug it on it. Hi, thank you.
Thank you. Love it, thank you. Whoa, I almost spilled that water, that would've been awful.
So there's another A and R here, well, let's do only one.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Ali, come on down.
We go to check for that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's a check, come on.
Do we know what the balance was?
Yeah.
Balance was?
Yeah, that was the one.
Okay, so we'll do, that was done. Okay, now we're down to, where is he? Wait, I did put him on here, didn't I?
Yes, I saw it, Mark. It was under eight, new business eight.
Okay, good, all right, continue discussion, Western Circle Acceptance and Project Completion. All right, Ms. Ali, let's see, the last, we left this, well, actually, I don't think we can do it in time to make it to next, this meeting, because we have to give them the warrants. You think we can make it to the next town meeting?
Which one, this meeting?
The one, no, town meeting coming up in like.
Yeah, why not? Because he, he already been talking to the town admin, right?
Oh, Town and Minzon?
Yeah, he has all the paperwork and most of the work and most of the comments and problems, everything was resolved by B H P. And last me, last year, when we were going through, I couldn't get my paperwork together regarding the association. The sewer, sewer and drainage problems and we had that.
The letter from.
Then we had to donate some money to the park and also, everything was taken care.
Well, did, I, I asked you, the D P W guy, if he went out to re-inspect, or anybody went out to re-inspect after that letter from him?
He had given, last year he had given, L S which was completed.
That was completed? He's, did you tell him about it?
I called him, the day I talked to you.
And I, and I talked to him about that and he said he hadn't talked to you, or he hadn't been out there again yet.
Yeah, I left him, I have two messages on him, I think.
I have to follow up on that.
I'll get on that case in, you know, whatever he wants, I can do that thing that's...
I think the, the, the key thing is the homeowners association, right?
Well, but the, but the drainage, I don't want the, uh, the drainage system has to be what it's supposed to be, cause I don't want it to be town responsibility.
Drainage thing was all resolved. The drainage is going, it'll, uh, it'll be a town thing, but the detention points will be maintained by...
Yeah.
The association. And, uh, the association had applied already for the revision to take out the sewer, sewer, uh, maintenance from the association, and, uh... The select board approved it already, and the planning board was informed, and everything was taken care.
Yeah, no, we, we edited all that stuff to make it so the sewer is a town sewer, not private sewer. We did all that work.
So I, I resigned my, as a trustee already. And I have appointed two, two new trustees.
Somebody else can do this. You can, you can leave this up.
Which I am able to do it.
You can make sure that this is right. I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't remember any of that stuff.
Last time, you know, we, uh, if, before tall, if I know, but correctly, you know, the only thing is for spending it, the bigger problem was the homeowners association. The sewer one was the huge one, and then, you know, we did go to the...
No, no, that's all, the sewer and the walking path is over. That's all done.
It's all over.
That's, that's complete and done.
So this is the only one major thing was spending.
No, that was not major thing. I, I don't think so. I think that there was other problems. There was a problem with some trees in the wrong place, the asphalt drawing was bad.
The trees, we had, we wanted to plant the trees.
I think, I think we resolved the trees, Mark.
Yeah, the tree was resolved, because you know...
I believe that we resolved all that.
None of the homeowners may want to put the trees on now, on that, uh, their lawn now.
Yeah.
So that's how that was resolved.
I had an email from the, I had an email from the T, T, T Warren, I had an email from the Warren Department.
Okay, then, then I'm behind on this. I have to catch up, because I sent, after that meeting, I sent something to town council to ask what the situation was there.
There was a question about town council and interpretation of something to do with the, uh, the, um, housing, uh, uh...
A and R lot.
Yeah, the A and R lot, uh, but there was also something regarding the...
Trees and the...
No, not the trees. Trees were done. We, we approved the trees.
So, Mark, based on the planning, or they have to plant some trees, but those trees were not planted, okay?
Yeah.
So, the last meeting, I think Kevin was, uh, once said enough.
I think the board...
So the, none of the homeowners, they may not want to have a tree now, because they are, they have a nice lawn.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Fine, fine, that's good. Um, the issue was whether we can do that, and I, I sent a message to town council. I just gotta go find the message.
Yeah, just look at it.
It took them like six months, and I don't know if they answered the question. I kept on following up with them. I just gotta go find that email and see what they said.
Do you have anything on that? No, actually, no, it was all...
Homeowners Association was the, you're right, the homeowners association was the big...
Homeowners Association was the big thing.
And I was upset about the ninth, or tenth, or eleventh, or fifteenth house.
Ninth lot. Ninth lot.
Ninth lot.
So...
Yeah.
Homeowners Association was big thing, but the trees, when you, uh, when we reduce the bond, I wanted the planning board to vote for it, and planning board voted, I think... That problem is gone.
For the trees.
For the trees. Actually, Kevin was there.
I think we voted, but we had to make sure we could do that.
Yeah, you, you guys voted it.
Thing to waive.
Okay. Make sure.
I have to find the email.
Yeah, we'll have to go back a ways and, and get the history of it, but there was, there were definitely some sticking points, that if, if VHP has to be involved in anything new, we don't have any money in the account.
No, we decided that VHP was not gonna be involved, because all I knew is re-review the same thing ten times.
This is the new trustees.
The two new trustees?
Yeah.
Uh, from... Opedro, okay. What's there, which... Which address are they?
Are all the houses in the homeowners association?
Except the, except the one lot in a...
Except the, except the A and R lot?
Yeah.
Okay, but all eight, or all of the other eight are in, in the association?
Yes.
Do they all know that, that that one's not in there? I'm reading the trust here. Oh, this trustee resignation, and this is the two new ones, okay. So now all the houses are in it. They've all signed on that they know they're in it, I guess.
Actually, they applied, uh, they applied and signed for the amendment of the trust.
Yes, way back then.
Do we have copies of that?
They've been signed for it.
Do we have copies of that?
Yes, we have.
We have, I think I, I may have a copy here, cause everyone had signed for the, they were, they applied for the permit, uh, for the amendment.
No, I have this... Yeah, I have this key one. Cause it, cause it was...
That was all done.
On the amendment, it was because he didn't own them all then, so they all had to apply.
Okay.
You know, that's true.
Crossing all the Ts and dotting the Is.
Yeah, why don't you check on it, Mark, you know?
Yeah, cause I don't wanna do any more homework on this, cause I've been doing it for seventeen years now.
We can, we can do that.
No, eighteen years.
Eighteen years!
Yeah.
So do you have that clean copy?
Uh, which?
All the things, you know, the, for the...
For the acceptance, I have a clean copy. I'm going to drop it off to the...
What about the planning board?
This is planning board, can't...
Oh, and then the, um, which one, the...
The planning board and then go over, Mark, you know, you know better than anyone else.
We, oh, we need the, we need the ASBILT, and that's, the ASBILT is the one that shows the problem with the trees, and we have to be able to say that we are letting that go away. That's what it was, I think. There's a couple of things that we have to let go. I think I have this digital.
Yeah, you have it digital.
Yeah, but this one, he might have added some, uh, deleted.
Did you change it?
Did he change anything?
No, same thing. Oh. It was hard work by...
Yeah, I know.
And they threw it last year.
And did they? Cause I, at some point, I found, uh, the binder. I was like, but the binder was empty. I was like, what happened to this?
Well, I couldn't make the, when we had the bond deduction, uh, owed long, owed what we had, that time everything was resolved, about VHP.
We can say, we can, we'll make that be the thing.
So this is for your next week homework, Mark, when you are on vacation.
It's true.
You know better than anyone else on that.
That's horrible.
Yeah, just, uh, go over everything, you know, if everything is right, you know, we can...
I think a recommendation, uh, from planning board has to go to the select board, right?
But the other thing we have to do is we have to, um...
Hold a public hearing?
No, no, we have to, we, we have to...
Have a meeting.
No, i- it's vote to say that the project is complete.
Complete.
And to do that, I think we just have to make sure that the drainage stuff is resolved, and then...
So all I had to do is final, uh, once if it goes on the thing, I had to go cut the tree, cut the grass in the detention form, that I had to take care of.
Yeah, just...
What did you do?
Let me get, do my homework, and I'll get like some list together.
I want to wait, uh, unless...
Yeah, let's make a punch list, and let's get it done.
Let's get, uh...
No, but if the DPW director goes, they may say it.
I'll meet him with there and, uh, tell him if it has to be cut, you'll cut it and, uh, get that thing all taken care.
Yeah, connect with the DC, the...
DPW.
I'm trying to...
Yeah, DPW director is also stormwater or whatever chief.
Yeah.
So he's the one who has to, whatever.
He has to say yes to us.
I mean, sort of, because it's, it's on our project, but I mean, he's the one who can make a judgment.
Water department is okay, and, uh, I know that there are many like...
Sewer doesn't, well, the sewer, we have, oh, it's all said from two DPW directors, I go, or something like that.
So they have, many matters are there, right?
Water's okay, electric's okay.
There are many cleaning directors.
Yeah, for whatever we have, we have.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think anybody was hung up.
So...
Except the, oh, DPW was concerned about, did you do some patching of the road?
Yesterday.
Yeah, he was concerned with some cracks around drainage or something like that.
Took care of it. Took care of that.
And then...
And a manhole, he was telling me.
The manhole was sinking or something?
Took care of that.
Okay. Right, and, and so it was those kinda things.
Maybe can, can you send an email to the DPW director?
Yeah, no, I, I was in touch with him two days ago about it. I sent him the letter. I said, did you, did you go and inspect these things again? He said he hasn't been out again. He didn't go out, so...
I called him a couple of times also, but it...
I'll ask him about it, maybe it, yeah, I want it to be, I don't want it to be him, because he kinda doesn't get paid, but I don't want it to be VHP, because they kinda get a lot of paid. I don't know. I don't know which way to go. So I'll ask him if he can do it, or I'll ask Heather, I'll ask Heather if he can do it. There we go.
Okay.
Okay, I'll remember that.
Keep your hands on yourself.
Are we done with that, Mark?
I think so. And, and, well, do, do you wanna make a mo, a contingent motion that we will send a...
Email.
Well, no, well, well, the, the, the select board needs a recommendation from the planning board that says, yes, we would like to say this should go on the...
On the...
On the warrant, and we endorse the project, or something like that, or approve the project.
Will we have time to be...
No, we will make a con, contingency now today.
Well, we can make the, we can do placeholder.
Because next meeting is too late?
It's February tenth, when's town meeting?
Yeah, it will be... October.
Oh, so we can do that, we can do it on the tenth, we just...
Yeah, but they have to put it on the warrant and all, you know. I don't know when they...
It's good to recommend it now, if you want to pull it up, you can pull it up.
They just hold the spot?
And staple it up, okay.
You, you can pull it up on the day of the meeting, also.
Town meeting, too.
Town meeting, too.
You can pull it up anytime, warrant. That's what we did last time.
Yeah.
Some placeholder for warrant. We can just use the same one we used before.
Yeah.
And planning board.
Cause I remember the, the, the big thing was getting the...
Homeowners Association.
Getting the snowplow, uh, the, the, the snow plowed for bus stops and stuff like that.
Yeah.
For kids to get...
For the winter time, so...
For me, I was, you know, much more worried about... I was worried much more about the homeowners association. They were opposing it.
Right.
So we were not happy with that, you know. That was, we need to make it clear, clean cut.
Right.
All of the things are, you know, he did the job, and, uh, all, all of the major thing was the roadway, the, the walk path is done, sewer is done.
Yeah, no, but that was all done two years ago.
The trees are also, you know, we took...
Last year, we took care of that, uh...
There was a, a lot of it was done. I remember that, and, but it was, it was...
Well, there was this.
It was the homeowners, it was the sticking points, and then it was the check. Those were, and we get the checks, so...
This check?
What took so long?
Usually I get an email, I bring my check.
You didn't know it.
I didn't have an email. If I have an email...
We have, need another one. I think we found another bill.
Frank?
Yeah.
I think we found, we found extra bills, too, you know, we're making up.
Whenever I get an email, my, my son's a nice planning board.
You have nothing to do with it.
If we wait till the tenth, can we do the recommendation?
No, just make a motion on conditions. We can always pull it back. I would do the motion with the conditions.
Okay, so the motion will be, we recommend approval of the, we recommend to the select board to appro, approve, we recommend to the select board that this front, the street be accepted conditionally on the two things, the...
The DPW director's inspection.
Of the stormwater.
Yeah.
And...
What else?
The homeowners association, uh, verification.
Verif, I mean, we have this right here.
Yeah, that's a good sign.
Which is two new people and his resignation.
Okay.
That, that itself speaks the thing. Have you registered it?
You've got it. Recorded copy, I've got it.
Oh, that, it's all registered.
Did they do it? I, I talked to the registered deeds bureau. They say they won't do them.
What?
They'll put them in, but they, they, they don't like putting in, um, homeowners association.
Oh, really?
They would only put the whole document in as a homeowners association.
Well, resignation is...
Just a little thing.
The whole document also, they put it in.
Do they?
Yeah. I have the whole document recorded for Westland, Aloha, or Suzagarden, so...
Where on the ticket, Mark?
I don't know, I don't know how to find those. I found the other things, deed stuff. I'll look again.
Actually, you had to put it by the name.
I know, it's under a different name or something, or address or something.
That's what happened. Yeah, here it was different, and then what happens, it will be torn off as well, and torn off as well, and so many deeds to go, uh, process to go through, it, it's going to be done.
I know, I, I think I found it once, but I don't know how I got it.
Warrant, you send us a copy, please, to Mark.
Say it, in the package.
It's there.
I mean, I got, I got this. Oh, the, uh, homeowners association?
Raj, make the motion.
Does it have, uh, with the two recommendation?
Oh, make the motion.
Uh, well...
Yes.
So moved?
So moved.
Okay. Wait a second. It's just two, uh, two conditions. Homeowners Association recommend, or thing...
I, I would, I would...
Oh, no, I want it to be three. And, uh, we, we approve the ASBILT and say that the project is complete to the building department.
I, I would also say contingent upon anything else that comes up that we didn't remember.
Okay, so four things. One, stormwater.
Cause it could be something you go back and find that we, we just can't think about tonight.
Two homeowners.
They don't have to...
I know, but I'm just, I don't wanna be locked into the contingency, because if we forgot something, that's important.
Three.
Or, you know, just make it like, you know...
That satisfies, uh, all of those things, you know.
All needed.
Conditions. But the last condition was things...
What's another way to say things? If anything comes up.
Un, unknown.
Unforeseen things.
Unforeseen, thank you. That's good, no, that's good.
Unforeseen things, you know, unforeseen on the...
I'll second that motion.
What was the, what was the four things? Stormwater, homeowners? Stormwater, homeowners, what was the third thing? Oh, bills?
The, uh, the, uh, ASBILT.
Oh, ASBILT, oh, that's, oh, then there's five things, ASBILT.
Mark.
ASBILT, and then the bills, cause you wanna make sure that there's no...
That there's no, no outstanding bills, right?
He has things to bill, Mark.
Well, I, I just want, we, we should verify it.
Okay, so it's, uh...
Yes, other projects.
Recommended?
I'm just saying, we should verify it.
You have a lot of money sitting between, also in the bun.
So now, it's six things. Stormwater, homeowners, ASBILT, unforeseen issues, bills, and completion to building department. That's the motion.
Building department?
That's the motion. Well, no, that's, that's what I say to, somebody wanna so move it?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Go home and sleep.
No, we still have to start the other one.
Thank you.
He can.
Oh, he can go to sleep. Uh, yes, thank you for coming in. So this has to go to the shredder.
Alright, is there anything that's, we have to...
Oh, sign this, here.
Uh, I would, uh, sign it. That's the authorization stuff.
What is this?
This one is important. Let's take care of this, the bylaw.
Wait, sign this one, I'm thinking, I'm doing number one now. Number one, you signed it, but he didn't, and he didn't.
Yeah.
Frank didn't, ah.
The new guy.
Okay.
What, which one is assigned?
Assigned.
Okay, what's important, which number's important?
The, well, back to the hearing, here, the seven thirty public hearing, um, do you have that other notice?
Yeah, I have it, I can read it.
Okay, just, you don't have to read the whole thing, read the, like.
We're starting a public hearing right now?
Yeah, cause.
Okay.
We have to start it so we can end it.
Okay, it's not public.
A lot of people here waiting.
It's true, there are a lot of, that's a big contingent. Or you can read this one.
MGL, okay, first note to MGL forty-eight, section five, Westpiles and Planning Board will hold a public hearing on. Wednesday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, seven thirty P M, in a hybrid setting at the Westpiles and Town Hall, one forty West Street. Uh, Westpiles and two ten board meeting room, second floor, by zoom.
Four.
Uh, purpose, uh, propose to consider amending Westpiles' zoning bylaws as outlined below. Uh, propose a new zoning bylaw in section three zero five dash five, referred to as. Drive-through facilities on Westpiles and Street. The proposal seeks to prohibit new drive-through facilities along Westpiles and Street. Route wall, in an effort to promote pedestrian safety, reduce traffic congestion, and preserve traditional. Characters of this important corridor. The complete text of this proposed bylaw. Is available at the town clerk's office for public inspection during the regular business hours. Any interested person is invited to attend this meeting. At which time, you will be given opportunity to be heard. Mark, Fred, and Chair.
Thank you very much. Started, um, did, did you see a re-review? The bylaw that the select board sent over to us about?
It's basically, yeah, okay, it's, uh, basically, it's, uh, in, in essence, it says. In any of the, the, to prohibit, entirely prohibit, any future. Drive-throughs along Route Wall. Not, uh, not entire places, right? So that's what it's, in an essence, it says like.
Not in what places?
Not other town, other, say suppose central.
Only one.
Just Route Twelve?
Route Twelve, because it's more of congested, more traffic, so we cannot afford it. More, you know, like, several drive-throughs goes here, here, DQ and, uh. Uh, Comperland Farms, Dunkin Donuts, and then, uh, banks, and then, uh, the major thing is, you know, the real concern is the DQ. You know, the spill of traffic.
D two Q is not new.
It's an existing business.
Existing business.
And we have no.
We.
Way of changing that unless.
No, they all grandfathered, but.
Right.
So the idea is, you know, we could minimize, say, today.
So.
So these guys came in, they approved the drive-through for the new Dunkin Donuts. What will happen to the old Dunkin Donuts place? Are they going to come back with another drive-through? So that time, you know, they have to go through the special permits, the Z B A can say no.
That's correct. It's not, they don't want another drive-through there.
What is the, uh?
They don't, yeah.
What is the role of the planning board in this bylaw?
So, it's a zoning bylaw.
It's, uh, essentially, you know, select board proposes, or, select board refers a zoning bylaw. And then they send it to the planning board. Planning board holds a public hearing, and then they find out with the public. They are here, so we need to find out, and then we will send the comments either way, this or that. We will send their.
It's just a guide.
Yes.
It's not up or down, it's, it's not gonna change anything whether we say yes or no.
Yeah, we will send it back to the select board.
We do have to give them back what they gave us, and that will be what people vote on at town meeting, so.
And also, when the select board, they can determine, the board will hold a, uh, another, uh, meeting.
Well.
In which meetings, they will say, you know, how many, whether, can we put it in the town meeting warrant? So we can say yes, the select board can say no too. So it's a majority. It goes, when they say majority, then it goes to the town meeting warrant. The zoning bylaw is approved only by the three, three-fourth of, two-third of the, two-third majority?
Two-thirds, yeah.
Two-third majority of the registered voters at the town meeting.
So our prerogative is just to give an opinion to the select board?
Yeah, it, it, that's what they're asking for from us, but we all, they're, if we don't like the document they gave us, we should edit that, cause that's what they're gonna put in the warrant. You know, or, the other thing, like you asked, you, you mentioned about another hearing. Like, the other thing we could do is we could, we could give them a recommendation, but continue this hearing, so that if they want us to do more work, or to change it.
Let's, uh, let's do them, let's, can, let's, I, I would like to.
I'm afraid that.
Do we have discuss, I mean, we, we're here, there's no public, uh, we're here.
Right, yeah.
Do we have individuals dis- in discussion on this, like, Paul, do you have an opinion? Raj, do you have an opinion?
Oh, I have an opinion, I can say that.
Okay, so, let's, can we just talk about opinions right now?
Yeah, I can say this, this is a.
I have opinion.
I, I, I have an opinion.
We'll do it one time.
Here is mine, here is mine. So we all know Route Two, Route One. We drive it, we drive it. We sit in it, we wait in the tra- in that traffic.
Wait, I'm sorry, Raj, is this, is this you speaking, or is, okay, I didn't know if you were doing it in a, 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 a.
And we share the same frustration day after day. I understand the frustr- frustration, I feel it too. Safety is always our top priority. We must protect our families, and we must protect our community. But Route Two is more than a road, it is the lifeline of Westpiles and. I support our local businesses. It keeps jobs here, and for many of, many of our residents, including seniors, parents with the young childrens. People with disabilities, and workers on the go, a drive-through is a important part of that daily life. So now, you know, I respect that some believes total ban might be the solution, but. I believe there is a better way to reach the same goal. The total ban could slow business growth. Reduce options for the residents who depends on the, on these services, and create. Different rules for current businesses, and those hoping to invest here in the future. There is an, another reality, under the propos- under this proposal, the drive-throughs we already have been grandfathered in. That means they would keep operating as they are, but in most cases, they would not make any improvement. That could help with the traffic flow or safety. We would lose the chance of encourage upgrades. That benefits everyone. And if, if we ban drive-throughs entirely, we send a signal. To new businesses that depends on the, on them, Westpiles and is not the place for you. Those businesses will go somewhere else, and within, with them, go to the jobs. Uh, the tax revenues and the local convenience. Meanwhile, we have heard talks about the proposal of a. Super Walmart along this same corridor. Let's be honest, the traffics from this development of this size would be. Far greater than from the small businesses with single drive-through. We cannot afford to focus on small. On the small while overlooking the big picture. And the, and remember, if the drive-through disappears. The cars do not vanish. They end up in the already crowded parking lots. Where safety remains a concern, and where access become harder for delivery drivers. And for the residents with mobility challenges. So, here what I believe, we can protect the safety. And keep opportunities alive at the same time. We can make route through safer with smart. Site design, better lighting, improved traffic flow, and consistent enforcement. Yes, this all needs money. We need to have the, more money for this, you know, if you want to make any of the changes in the Route Wall, we need to make money. If you need to make the signal changes, D O team is not going to do anything, because ours is a small town. So this is, what about the leadership, it's about finding a balance, protecting what matters most, and making sure. Westpiles and works for everyone. So, with that keeping in mind, you know, so whatever the businesses we have. All are grand, drive-through businesses, all grandfathered. If you say no, new business is not going to come to Westpiles, say suppose Dunkin Donuts, or.
Well, but this exact thing that just happened.
McDonald's, say McDonald's, they depend on drive-through. Or, uh, or McDonald's, or, uh, the, another coffee place, Starbucks. They depend on Dunkin Donuts, and also, you know, Westpiles and is not the, uh, Route Nine or Suesbury. There are so many of industries, so many of people are there, so much business, this is a modest business. So I would, uh, uh, discu- this will discourage, people will go to another place. Yes, I'm totally agree, totally for it. Route Wall, the Route Wall is the worst of traffic in that thing, but having said that, if you go after six o'clock, after, uh. Busy times, no cars. Six o'clock, the total entire town is dead.
Yes?
I, I'm curious, is your opinion?
Mine, well.
Good.
I have one comment about preserve the traditional character of this important corridor.
Yeah.
I would suggest that ship is sailed.
Long time ago.
I'm afraid that the character of Route Twelve is, has vanished. I understand, as you said, Dairy Queen's a terrible thing. We're fixing the other terrible thing with this new Dunkin Donuts. That will make things a lot better.
Well, yeah, I would, I would make that the example, like, that could not happen if this had been done.
Right, cause we're not, we wouldn't be able to approve a new drive-through, which would be better than the old drive-through. So I would not be in favor of a ban of drive-throughs, and I think that the control of that sits partly with us. Because we're very aware of the situation, that's why, that's mostly why their original proposal. What, five, six years ago, was shot down.
Yeah.
Because everybody, this boards and everybody's concerned about traffic.
If you remember, you know, Vincent Wicknally said, you know, get an easement from this place.
Yeah.
So they said, no, we cannot go get an easement from the kind of current existing.
They bought, so they bought the plaza.
Now they bought the plaza?
Yeah, so, yeah, and I think they're being responsible, so I, I don't think a ban on new drive-throughs would really solve anything.
And also, I, I don't think so it will pass on the town meeting.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I think it's a horrible idea.
Yeah.
I, I, for all of the reasons you've said.
Yeah.
And all of the ones that I thought about, that I don't really need to elaborate on, but I'm, I'm a no.
No, I, I completely agree with everything that you said, I think that this, the earlier hearing is an example of why we shouldn't do that. Because people will not improve their properties.
Properly, it will work fine. They don't have to back up to Route Twelve every time.
Right.
DQ is a disaster, that should have never been approved like that.
True.
The whole parking lot is a disaster, and I was not on the planning board then, I just wanna make that perfectly clear.
Neither was I, and it is a disaster.
No, I, I totally agree with you, current DQ, the Dunkin Donuts, how many cars goes by in the morning? I go get one coffee and then get out.
Yeah.
If I go park the same parking lot, you know.
Right, if there wasn't a drive-through.
Yeah.
There will be a, how many accidents?
Oh, yeah.
No parking.
People would get one over instead of both, and a better.
Do you wanna?
Yeah, my, my opinion is exactly the same, except that if we, if we want to.
Give any opinion, or if you want to change it, what we can change it.
Well, I just wanna put forward, um, Z B A, so they do not want to be a lawmaker, but they would say. That the way this bylaw is written, the, the, it's a separate bylaw that says only on Route Twelve. Really, there's more text that needs to be edited in the rest of the bylaws, because right now, we allow. Drive-throughs in other parts of town, but that'll be confusing, because it doesn't say in Route Twelve only.
My vote is just to get rid of the entire idea.
And, and the.
Not change any words, just get rid of it, yep.
Okay, we can vote, we can vote it like that.
Yeah.
The other half would be to salvage, if we wanna salvage this, the only thing I would recommend, the only thing I would recommend. To make this any use to the town, is to put a bylaw in place, but you talked about enforcement. The only thing to do with this bylaw that would be of any value to the town, would to put in a penalty. For when your queuing gets on the street, maybe every violation you get paid a hundred, or you get.
Nobody's gonna enforce that. It's never gonna be enforced, uh, uh, we just gotta have better planning, and that's where I guess. This board and other boards come in.
So think of this, if the, you know, it's, uh, we talked about banning, but the super Walmart comes, think of how much.
Well, that's gonna make the traffic thing more than anything.
They may have, they may want a drive-through for their pharmacy.
No, no, that's, that's a different thing, you know, pharmacy is going to be a temporary.
No, but maybe they want a permanent one.
No, they want a temporary one, because the pharmacy will be inside the Walmart.
I think they do, they want the pickup, they don't want drive-through.
I understand, I understand.
But again, what if Walgreens wants, Walgreens wants to come to town, because C V S is here. Uh, this is, to your point about new business. It's, it's a big red flag.
No, and also, you know, seniors.
Yeah.
And people cannot walk, people with their ch- children.
It's the way of life.
It's a way of life.
Well, it's, sadly, sadly, that's true.
It is, it's, everybody is in a hurry to go somewhere else.
Yeah.
Right.
And the C V S drive-through.
Looting me, like I wanna go to bed right now.
The, the C V S drive-through, I, I don't think you could ever say that that's an issue with traffic, I mean, I, I don't, it's so slow.
I don't think it is.
If there's two cars in line, I'm out.
I always.
We don't have an hour.
I always walk into the store.
Yeah, uh, so, so the only thing, if we wanted to salvage it, would be to change the bylaw to be, have enforceable penalties.
I don't wanna salvage it, Mark.
No, are we gonna say no?
No.
I don't, I've never done that, I've never said, here, the bylaw has been turned down.
Give me a thousand dollars.
No.
See, you're, you're getting good at it.
Okay, so, do you want, what do you?
Planning board, what's he say?
We closed the public hearing, because the public has spoken, all of them.
Most, uh, most want to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right, so, then the next thing is the motion, or like, the opinion, or whatever you wanna say, like, the motion should be something like, the.
The planning board, the planning board, um.
They don't endorse this.
They do not endorse the idea of changing the bylaw.
Word is not, does not endorse.
The current version, the planning board does not end us the current version of the banning drive-through bylaw.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute, the motion was to not endorse.
Not, not to endorse.
Okay, so yay is a non-endorse.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
I, I can make it a endorse, if you want to.
And then we vote it down?
Yeah, no.
You'd be a good moderator, right?
I was a moderator.
Yes, I know you, I was there.
Let, let me change that more.
I roll.
That was.
Mark, let, let me make it a sapaski motion.
What?
Well, no, I, I think we're okay, the motion, the result of the motion is to not endorse the.
We all agreed not to endorse it.
Yeah.
That's what we did.
Well, you're in the undermice.
Bite.
Four to zero.
By law, as written.
Can we, can we motion to adjourn yet?
No, wait a second, there's something else. Alright, so that was done, this is.
Kevin, you can take a nap if you want.
Do you want coffee, you want coffees?
Ten o'clock.
Alright, so discussion of amendment, select board drive-through, A and R, okay, so there's, there's this other A and R, I don't know what to do, it's gonna be constructively. Um, this is, I don't know what to do.
What number are we on here, four?
Uh, is number.
Yeah, but nobody is here.
No, the Chad Pelletier guy is not here, but when I discussed this with him. Is it this one? Look, look what he's trying to do, and I don't know what to do with it, so I want some suggestions. So he's got.
Where is this?
Yeah, so like.
Temple and Maple.
Temple Street is over here, that's, uh, one forty.
Yep.
And Maple Street is here, and there's like this little, there's one that's on the corner, and now this guy is, um, what's his name, is, uh.
Huckleberry.
No, Rans from, it's Rans from, he owns this and this, but they're separate lots, and you know, he's got the big garage back.
Yeah, in the back, yeah.
So, I guess what he, so he's not changing the frontage, but this frontage is not good.
Yeah, one sixteen.
But it's existing, so I don't know.
It, what, um, just refresh, is it a hundred or a hundred fifty?
Uh, it's a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and tw- hundred and twenty, okay.
I think it's a hundred and twenty, what does he say? If it, if it's just a standard piece of property, not in a watershed or something like that.
Right.
And it currently is.
Oh, yeah, minimum, uh, one twenty.
Currently is one fifteen?
One sixteen point seven.
That's current, or that's what they wanna move it to?
He doesn't wanna change that.
Oh.
What he wants to change, I think this is the old lot line, and this is the new lot line, so I think he just wants more room in his backyard. You know, so he's taking a little bit away from this property.
So how did this become available?
Well, it's, it's, it's just that it's the lot, so we, we would endorse a lot with a sub.
With a grandfathered front.
Yeah, I don't know how to say grandfathered. I asked the building inspector, I said, what do you think about this? He said, um. It's not, you can't do that, so how is he ever gonna have another lot? I said, he, he doesn't say he wants another one, he says he wants to mess around with his property lines.
Yeah.
And I said, and, so he said, without that, I probably wouldn't give him a building permit, so I don't know, I, I'll tell him that, like, this. May not get a building permit now.
So, can we ask him to come and explain?
You want, can we do that, you, I, I would make a, whatever, suggestion that we do that for the next meeting, have him come in and talk.
So this is the current lot line, right here, right? So either way, either way, the frontage is not changing.
Yes, he's not changing frontage.
So they wanna make this lot line be this lot line.
Yes.
So can you make a modification to an existing lot that's not conforming?
That's what I mean, and that's the issue, so that's what I asked him, so that I could come to here and, and give an answer. But the answer was, you sort of can, but he won't give the.
He owns both lots?
Yeah, uh, it's sort of, he does, his wife and him own one, and he owns the other, or something like that.
Okay.
Mark, I would be comfortable, let him, let him come and explain, you know, it's not like, you know, we are, we are, I'm not going to assume anything, okay?
The other thing that they do is, he, so you could say that he's improving the, the situation, cause every, both of them are gonna be over an acre. New lot total is forty thousand, cause he's giving them this six thousand, or whatever, taking this, oh, he's taking ten and giving them six. Well, I guess, I guess it's just okay, cause he's still an acre, and this one looks like it's, it's way more than an acre, so they, they're conforming other than that, just the. Frontage, but the frontage has been like that since, we're not before zoning, you know, and he doesn't own that, so you can't take it away from that.
This is non-develop, this is not, currently not developed anyways, right?
I think this house there.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, you're right, there was, there's that little, uh, uh, fence down here, right?
Out here isn't developed, but I think there's a house here, and he's gonna drive away, that goes crazy.
So the thing is, you know, as soon as they make a, a, a and R, you can do anything you want, right?
Well, except, what I wanted to say is, if, I, I wanted to, to coach him along, like, you know that other A and R over on, um. Which one, the, the big expensive one over behind the school, when they made that A and R and it was wrong. When they made that A and R and it was wrong.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they can write again, three times.
Yeah, so I wanna make sure that we don't screw this guy up by saying, yeah, you can do this, and then. You can't do this.
Right.
So I wanted to.
Let them come and explain.
So, can I say that, or I'll have him come in and ask him to come in to the next?
Next meeting.
Yeah, I, but, but who's gonna be the one to know that everybody's right, is it, is it?
Well, it doesn't matter, if the building inspector will give him building permits, it doesn't matter, I mean, like, I don't care.
Is a building involved?
Not now, but like, if this guy decided, I don't know, to modify his house, so he needs a building permit on this property.
Yeah, but that doesn't change, the problem is, Mark, this didn't change.
Right.
So that's irrelevant.
Well, except that we're endorsing, I, what I don't wanna do is make a lot that is now not.
The question is, are we endorsing, are we endorsing the change in lot lines?
Oh, yeah.
But that doesn't mean we're endorsing the frontage.
It's kind of a rough one, because we're endorsing the whole plan.
Whole plan. Oh, yeah, entire plan.
Well, then, then that's the case, then it, then it doesn't meet, how can we endorse something that doesn't meet?
Well, unless, unless we can get something from the building inspector, says, yes, I agree that that's a, a, a non, existing non-conformance, and it doesn't make it worse.
Was it ever grandfathered back to a different footage?
Just the fact that there's been other A and Rs to the same property, you know, but I don't know how they did it, you know? I just need to.
Mark, make sure, in our next meeting, make sure with the building inspector.
Yeah.
Your alarm's going off to go home.
It's not my alarm, that's my daughter trying to find me.
She should be finding you, yeah, he'll be home soon.
Okay, so I'll do that, and we'll, we'll ask the building inspector to come in. On my iPhone alert. So this one is, ask the I to. Should we have more meetings, a discussion, roundtable, oh, do you wanna just give a summary of whatever you came up with for? Well, Walmart came in, and it was supposed to be a department head's meeting.
Yep.
And I, I wasn't able to go, so Paul went.
Um, it's been in the paper now, it's, it's been made public, so. Yep. Uh, they are increasing the total interior space slightly.
No, from ninety-seven to a hundred and fifty.
What they're getting, yeah.
Yeah. Cause they're dead inside the corner.
When they're taking down.
Until the cinema place, it will be torn down.
Maybe total square footage, but.
Total square. The entire place, or, or a portion of that place?
I think that's most of it, everything cinema in direction of Forward.
Okay, they're gonna keep the, the end, where Bank of America used to be.
Kickboxing and the bank.
To use that for a drive-through pharmacy temporarily, to, to keep their pharmacy open.
Okay.
Um, and then they talked about building another, uh, box, they called it, next to that. So I think everything except the old bank is going.
Okay.
Certainly the movie theater and everything else is going.
Okay.
Um.
Park, parking is not increasing so much, now we have a six hundred and ninety, that's seven hundred and ten, not twenty.
Yeah.
Required by the size of the place.
Yeah.
Not, not increasing a lot.
There's not much, I mean, the lot is not huge.
Yeah, not nice.
So you can't really increase the size of really anything.
Yeah.
But there, the, one, one problem was, it's owned by two people.
Yep.
And they wanna count. Two separate people?
No, same guys, two, two of the.
Same guys.
Same thing like this.
Oh, okay.
So.
So they wanna know that they can count everything as a common project, in other words, the number of, number of parking spaces. Cause the number, cause the number of parking spaces on the left-hand lot has to be, has to be included.
And also the trees, number of trees.
Number of trees also, so, they're gonna start at the end of twenty-seven, twenty-three, twenty-seven.
They have to come to here.
Yeah, I know, I know, but, uh.
So, and, and, I, I think, I mean, I tried to speak up, cause I was virtual, and I said, this is exactly the same situation, where they don't own it. But they have agreements among everybody that they are.
Yeah, yeah.
Can do the work, you know?
So they're gonna move, they're gonna move the entrance driveway slightly north? Yeah, that, that, actually, that part confused me, because I'm looking at the thing, and I'm thinking about what's there. To me, it would make more sense to go south and, and have it be across the street from the car wash. So that, that one light does both traffics.
Yeah, I, I think that they're trying to get their entrance to line up with whatever they're rearranging for their buildings. You know, so you come in, sort of on one side, rather than dumping in the middle, I don't know.
Yeah.
They do.
Not if we tell not to.
Anyway, there's a very problematic things, let them come in.
They did talk about the, the crisscross, the, like, the, the light also has that. The millennial stub of a street that goes into the water.
Yeah, but that's not, there's no traffic there, there's no traffic there.
Yeah, they also, they had to worry about it, I think, then recently.
Uh, my concern would be more picking up the car wash traffic, or having that one light serve both.
Well, the, the other concern is the, as you go up that turn, the sight distances get horrible. You know, like, if you're standing in front of.
Going, going south is better, in my thought, yeah.
Going north.
Yeah. The blind sight is not so important, there's a traffic light there. Well, it is, because if you come over the hill, there's all of a sudden a red light, oh, you, you, you don't know, you, and you, you.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Unless you haven't put the, you know, red light ahead, and, you know, everybody looks at those.
It doesn't mean.
Okay, we can discuss in the.
Yeah.
So that, that was one of the things that is on there, just cause.
We can discuss in the, uh, public hearing.
Right, so we have that public hearing?
Yeah, then the engineer comes, we can discuss.
Do, do you want to, it's just a discussion, I don't think we need any.
No, we don't need anything.
What do you want, what's to do adjourn?
Uh, zoning conflict request for action, oh, no.
What's that one about?
Uh, that, that house.
Oh, that's the one, that's where the, they've advertised.
There, so what happened is, you know, they were, it's supposed to be a single-family home, they were running a business. So, and it was the result, Mark, it was the result, so the building inspector did issue a notice and dissent order. So it was the result.
Okay. What's a Page Fuller property, it's minor modification?
Sure did.
Number seven.
Seven.
What's that?
Oh, request minor modification, that's true, that is, they asked for, uh. You know, you know the, the Marwa building?
Yep.
Our running, yeah. And then there's like lawn, and then the new stuff that they're just building now.
Yep, yep.
On the road that's over there, they're adding spaces, that like, the people in that building could park on, on the other side of their driveway. So that's, that's a minor modification that has some drainage issue or something like that, because it's now more impervious. Um, we can acknowledge it as a minor modification, say we'll handle it on the Asbeld. Send it to VHB to make sure that the drainage isn't impacted.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds right.
Or do you want it to reapply?
Let's, you know.